Buenos días, amigos. Este escenario sobre el Comité de Averigado de la Poblidad, los Rесores Humanos, la construcción de Guam, la revitalización de Hagatna, asuntos regionales, bibliotecas públicas, telecomunicaciones y tecnología se ha llamado a orden. Ahora son las 8:35. Mi nombre es Mary Camacho Torres y estoy sentada por la presidenta, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, como su vicepresidenta en el comité. Para recordar, en concordancia con el capítulo 8 del GCA 5, subsección B 107, se enviaron notificaciones públicas el jueves, 4 de noviembre, adhiriendo al tiempo de cinco días, y una segunda audiencia pública el miércoles, 9 de noviembre, 48 horas antes. Además, este escenario fue notificado en el sitio web del legislador. Los testimonios escritos pueden ser enviados por correo electrónico a senador Munya Barnes en guamlegislature.org, o ustedes pueden entregárnoslos a nuestros oficinas en 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatna, Guam. En la agenda de esta mañana tenemos cuatro alegres: alegre número 308-36, C.O.R., alegre número 331-36, L.S., alegre número 347-36, L.S., alegre número 354-36, L.S. Me acompañan aquí esta mañana el senador Telo Titegui. Gracias por acompañarme. Antes de proceder a la discusión, me gustaría primero proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para todos los que están presentes hoy. La conducta de este escenario será la siguiente: La presidenta invitará a individuos que han firmado para testificar. Los individuos testificantes serán primeros reconocidos por la presidenta antes de hablar y expondrán su nombre para los propósitos de registro. El orden de cuestiones comenzará con el panel de senadores, y cada miembro podrá hacer una pregunta a un individuo testificante por cuatro rondas, y será proporcionado otra ronda si es necesario. Las preguntas y testimonios pueden ser confinados solo a la sustancia o naturaleza de la agenda. La inferencia personal acerca del carácter o el motivo de cualquier senador o cualquier individuo testificante no es permitida. Cualquier violación de esta regla general resultará en la despedida del horno público. Con eso dicho, ahora pasaremos al primer item de la agenda. Bienvenidos, senadores Brown y senador Ada. Alegre número 308-36, C.O.R., es el primer alegre de la agenda. Fue presentado por Telo Titegui, Joe S. Sin Augustin, Joanne Brown y Vianthony Ada. Este es un acto para amendar la sección 12, 303, C, del artículo 3, capítulo 12, título 12, código Guam anotado, relativo a la fortalecimiento del sistema de reportaje de emergencia de Guam restringiendo a los transportadores locales, proveedores de protócos de internet y proveedores comerciales de servicios de radio de reducir más del 5% de las recogidas mensuales de E911 por los costos administrativos. Invitaré al senador Titegui, el principal patrocinador del alegre 303-36, por su declaración.
Señor presidente, y buen día a todos aquí hoy. Y gracias por programar este escenario público sobre el alegre 308 y por esta oportunidad de resumir la medida. Madre presidenta, el alegre 308 busca establecer un límite razonable del 5% como la porción de la recogida mensual de E911 que los proveedores de servicios pueden conservar para ayudar a cubrir los costos asociados con la recolección y transmisión de estos fondos al gobierno de Guam. El alegre 308 fue presentado en respuesta a problemas que se levantaron durante el escenario fiscal del año 2023 del departamento de la policía de Guam, que se llevó a cabo en mayo de 2022, en el que senador Brown, senador Ada y senador Joe Sin Augustin también estaban presentes y tenían algunas preocupaciones con esta medida y apoyaron, por supuesto, este alegre por el cambio. Durante el escenario fiscal, los representantes del GFD buscaron la asistencia de los senadores con respecto a la porción de la recogida mensual de E911, la recogida mensual de E911 que se conserva por los proveedores de servicios. Según los representantes del GFD, una media de 85 centavos de la recogida mensual de $1 es remitida al gobierno de Guam, con los 15 centavos restantes conservados por los proveedores de servicios por costos administrativos. Después del escenario fiscal del GFD, escribí a la Comisión de Peticiones Públicas, pidiendo una copia de la política establecida por la comisión o guías que gobiernen la porción de la recogida mensual de E911 que puede ser conservada por costos administrativos. Madre presidenta, 12 GCA, sección 12, 303, C, autoriza a cada transportador local, proveedor de internet, o proveedor de servicios de radio móvil comercial para reducir sus propias gastos de cobertura de servicios de recolección, manteniendo la base de datos de respuesta a la seguridad pública y para los informes y auditorios, como se requiere por la comisión. En una carta a la PUC, me refiero al informe OPA 210-06 relativo al sistema de reportaje de emergencia de E911, que recomendaba que la PUC establecía, "una fórmula estándar para determinar igualmente las posibilidades de gastos administrativos". Madre presidenta, las preocupaciones que se levantan en el escenario fiscal del GFD están consistentes con los hallazgos contenidos en el informe OPA número 210-06 emitido en octubre de 2010. El OPA encontró que los costos administrativos de los proveedores de servicios locales estaban superiores a las tasas establecidas por los proveedores de servicios en otras jurisdicciones de EE.UU. El informe OPA 210-06 afirmó que los costos administrativos en Guam son inconsistentes y son mayores que las tasas emitidas en otras jurisdicciones de EE.UU. El OPA encontró que los costos de los proveedores de servicios rigen de menos de 1% en Texas, 5% en Dakota del Norte, y Nueva York y Pennsylvania, 2%. Basado en su revisión, el OPA determinó que los proveedores de servicios locales conservaban administrativamente como 3% hasta un alto de 31% por cada dólar de recogida. En comparación, el sistema de reportaje de emergencia de E911 aumentado recibió como mucho como 97 centavos, mientras que como poco como 69 centavos por cada dólar de recogida. Madre presidenta, para referencias, Hawaii actualmente autoriza que cada proveedor de servicio de comunicación o vendedor pueda conservar 2% de la recogida de la recogida para compensar los costos administrativos asociados con el cobro y la recolección de la recogida. Los vendedores y proveedores en Dakota del Sur se permiten mantener una tarifa administrativa equivalente a 2% de la recogida. En respuesta a mi solicitud de una copia de cualquier registro que la PUC pueda tener que refleja la certa fórmula estándar, como recomendada por el OPA, y que resumirá su revisión de la recogida mensual de E911 y los ingresos que se mantienen por los proveedores de servicios por costos administrativos, la PUC escribió en respuesta que los costos administrativos para los agentes de recolección, al máximo, son un poco más de 7%. La PUC informó que desde el año fiscal 2011 hasta 2017, la cantidad anual total de recogida por año conservada por los agentes de recolección para cubrir los costos administrativos era aproximadamente 144,000. De entre las remittas anuales, promedio de más de dos millones de dólares, la cantidad anual de costos administrativos para todas las compañías de telecomunicación en Guam estaba en el rango de 144,000 por año. Madre presidenta, basado en los finanzas de Guam, 2,135,465 fue recolectado para FY21 y 2,203,976,000 fue recolectado durante FY2020. Estas cantidades representan la recogida mensual de E911 y no representan la cantidad anual que los proveedores de servicios recolectaron antes de reducir los costos por los costos administrativos. El límite del 5% para los costos administrativos en el alegre 308 es un punto de partida, y el borde puede ser amendado si justificado, si justificado por los proveedores de servicios y GFD. Las recogidas mensuales de E911, depositadas al gobierno, aseguran que estas recogidas pagadas por los consumidores del sistema de reportaje de emergencia de Guam sean contadas. Madre presidenta, espero las discusiones, incluyendo cualquier aclaración que pueda ser necesaria en el futuro, asegurando que implementemos una capa administrativa estándar que elimine cualquier duda que los clientes, los proveedores y el gobierno puedan tener sobre si las recogidas mensuales de E911 se están utilizando para apoyar nuestro sistema de reportaje de emergencia. El alegre 308 prioriza la seguridad pública y los requisitos que nuestros primeros respondientes reconocerán su papel crítico, los proveedores de telecomunicación, en la recolección de estos fondos en un modo temprano y eficiente. Señor presidente, quiero dar la oportunidad de presentar el alegre 308-36.
Gracias, senador Titegui. Me gustaría ahora abrir el plazo para aquellos individuos que han firmado para testificar oralmente. ¿Puedo llamar al panel, señor Robert Kelly, señor Fred Horecki, señor Daniel Stone y señor Daniel Tidinko? Señores, me llamaré por el orden por el que se han firmado. También quiero agradecer a Jim Smith de ITNE y Kevin Riley de GFD que también hicieron testimonio, pero su testimonio fue indicado como testimonio escrito solo. Así que vamos a empezar con el señor Kelly. Como todos ustedes, por favor, indique su nombre para el registro y luego ustedes pueden empezar con su testimonio. Señor Kelly.
Muchas gracias, Madre presidenta. Mi nombre es Robert Kelly, residente de PD, y trabajo con la empresa MCS, incluyendo la empresa MCS Sales y Servicios. Como consultor de telecomunicación activo y empresario en esta comunidad durante décadas, incluyendo la mantenimiento continuo de la Asociación Nacional de Número de Emergencia, o NINA, como profesional de número de emergencia desde 2002, agradezco a los autores del alegre de este tema por traer este tema adelante para la consideración. En apoyo, sugiero dos mejoras al texto, incluidas señalando una aparente supervisión en la administración de la ley actual y la scrutiny legislativa. El alegre número 308-36, C.O.R., propone un límite de porcentaje en los costos administrativos a menos que una mayor parte sea aprobada por la PUC. Me sugeriría que un 6% sea un porcentaje justo, seguro de harbor. Mucho se ha dicho en la sección 1 de las tarifas más bajas en otras jurisdicciones. Sin embargo, en estos mercados, los proveedores de telecomunicación sirven a clientes mucho mayores a través de múltiples regímenes estatales y regulatorios nacionales encontrados en el tamaño del mercado y no encontrados en el tamaño del mercado y la realidad regulatoria de Guam. Y solo para señalar que en Guam nuestros transportadores han medido a sus suscriptores en las decenas de miles, y nadie está ni siquiera cerca de 100,000 todavía. En el continente de EE.UU., Verizon tiene 142,8 millones de suscriptores, T-Mobile tiene 110 millones de suscriptores y AT&amp;T 101 millones. Incluso los más pequeños vendedores tienen más de un millón de suscriptores cada uno. Así que cuando estamos comparando los costos fijos con los suscriptores del continente y promedioendo por suscriptor, no es realmente una comparación justa. Nuestro régimen regulatorio está claramente evolucionando, evidente por el alegre de este tema. Los costos locales y administrativos para cubrir los mandatos son relativamente mayores, y nuevamente, es debido al número de suscriptores que pasa el promedio. Los costos directos que exceden el límite de harbor seguro de 6% para la administración y las operaciones para proporcionar servicio mandatory pueden ser específicamente presentados a la PUC para la aprobación. En el último punto, los transportadores individuales en Guam no han anticipado inversiones específicas en características técnicas requeridas por el sistema E911 o ahora el sistema NG911 elegido por el gobierno de Guam. tales empresas privadas se enfrentarán a otros gastos para estar completamente conformes dentro del sistema público y deberían poder recuperar cantidades adicionales por tarifas específicas del programa que recolecta. Y podría agregar que la Comisión Federal de Comunicaciones requiere que cualquier tarifa que se reembance por los transportadores sea solo para aquellas cosas que son exclusivamente utilizadas para el sistema E911 o NG911 y son costos justos y razonables. Así que si se está poniendo una torre de celda y diciendo que hay E911 en ella, eso no cuenta. Tiene que ser exclusivamente esos items que se compran por los transportadores para apoyar E911. La preocupación por los costos adicionales no sólo se comparte por las empresas privadas, el gobierno enfrenta también otros costos externos adicionales para implementar plenamente E911, como la refinación de nuestro sistema GIS para el mapeamiento y geolocación, en lugar de depender de los proveedores de telecomunicación para implementar un sistema públicamente uniforme y preciso. Podría agregar que en Guam, separado del E911, no tenemos un sistema GIS preciso que va a, para cada pueblo, tiene calles comunes y geográficas y ubicaciones. Normalmente, cuando un ente E911 pone eso, toman el sistema GIS del condado o área existente. Guam está atrás en eso en este momento. En conclusión, señalo que Tito Solutions, una empresa privada involucrada por el gobierno para asistir a la implementación de la próxima generación de E911, está proporcionando servicios de telecomunicación definidos en la ley de Guam. ¿Tito Solutions tiene un certificado de autoridad? ¿Son sus tarifas sujetas a la revisión y a la aprobación de la PUC, como los otros proveedores de telecomunicación en esta jurisdicción? Si la comisión es objeto de Tito Solutions del gobierno a su autoridad, recomiendo que los políticos de decisión relevantes aborden esta aparente supervisión para garantizar objetivamente que los costos de servicio incurridos por el gobierno y los transportadores, que son pagados por los suscriptores, sean justificados y razonables. Gracias por considerar mis perspectivas sobre el alegre 308-36, C.O.R. Estoy disponible para asistir a su comité y personal en esto y otras cuestiones de telecomunicación si ustedes creen que esto sería útil.
Gracias, señor Kelly. ¿Puedo ahora llamar al señor Horecki? Por favor, introduce a ti mismo antes de que te proveas tu testimonio.
Buen día, Madre presidenta, senadores. Mi nombre es Fred Horecki. Soy el juez de derecho administrativo principal de la Comisión de Peticiones Públicas de Guam. Esta mañana presentaré el testimonio de Dr. Jeffrey Johnson, el presidente de la comisión. Por las razones mencionadas en el testimonio publicado y este testimonio oral, la PUC opone al alegre 308. En primer lugar, el alegre 308 no amende la ley existente en absoluto, y cuando miras la ley actual, el alegre es contrario y en violación de la ley actual. Bajo la ley existente, la PUC es responsable de determinar cuáles son los efectos reales de los proveedores y cuánto se debe reducir de las recogidas mensuales. Este alegre proporciona una limitación de 5%, lo cual es contrario a los efectos reales que los proveedores tienen derecho bajo la ley. Ahora, la ley actual ha estado en efecto desde 1999. Este alegre no lo amende. Basalimenta que los proveedores deben ser autorizados para reducir las remittas, esas de las recogidas de E911. Sus efectos reales incurridos por servicios de recolección, no un porcentaje, efectos reales. Y luego la provisión sigue proporcionando que las deducciones deben ser consistentes con el presupuesto aprobado por la PUC para tales costos. Por supuesto, implementando un porcentaje plano, eso es contrario a esta provisión. Así que la limitación del 5% arbitraria viola la ley existente y priva a los proveedores del derecho de reducir sus efectos reales. En segundo lugar, este alegre restringiría la capacidad de la PUC misma para cubrir sus costos al conducir actividades regulatorias requeridas por la ley. Así que para las actividades regulatorias de la PUC involucradas en E911, se financia a través de las recogidas mensuales. Sabes, las deducciones no solo van a los proveedores, esa es una fuente de financiación para la PUC. Una limitación de 5% plana amenazará la capacidad de la PUC para recolectar sus costos de recogida. Si los proveedores exceden ese valor, entonces la PUC estará incapaz de obtener tales cantidades porque todavía es el proveedor el que debe pagar esas cantidades de las recogidas a la PUC. La PUC ha estado manejando esta cuestión de recogida y efectos reales por más de 20 años. En muchos códigos, la PUC ha evaluado las tarifas regulatorias y costos contra los proveedores de telecomunicación. Ha habido un protocolo establecido por la PUC que establece el procedimiento exacto. En el códice GTA 1802, allí la PUC recuperó casi cuatro millones de dólares que el gobierno de Guam había transferido del fondo E911 al fondo general. Había muchas procedimientos regulatorios. El alegre contó con alrededor de 20,000 dólares y eso fue pagado a partir de las recogidas de E911. Al enactar este alegre, el legislador amenazaría la fuente de financiación de la PUC. Terceramente, el alegre interfiere con la autoridad independiente de la rendición de tasa de la PUC, bajo tanto el Acto Orgánico como la ley local. Lo que el legislador está haciendo aquí es involucrar directamente en la rendición de tasa determinando cuáles son las posibilidades en la recogida de E911. En 12 GCA, la legislatura de Guam ya ha delegado la autoridad de rendición de tasa para la recogida de E911 a la PUC. Y parte de eso es determinar cuáles son los efectos reales, porque no sabes cuál debería ser la recogida hasta que determines los efectos reales. Pero aquí el legislador quitaría la función de la PUC para determinar los efectos reales y involucrar en la rendición de tasa. Esto viola la autoridad independiente de rendición de tasa de la PUC establecida en el Acto Orgánico y la política en la Ley Pública 2618, que establece el fuerte interés público en un fuerte PUC independiente. El legislador debería desistirse incluso de considerar este alegre y debería dejar el poder y la autoridad para revisar y determinar los efectos reales con la PUC. Cuarto, no hay necesidad o justificación para este alegre. La PUC ya ha implementado un sistema para determinar los efectos reales de los proveedores que pueden ser reducidos de las recogidas mensuales. El alegre parece presumir que hay un problema ahora mismo con los costos administrativos, pero ni este alegre ni el departamento de la policía de Guam afirma que la cantidad de los fondos de recogida de E911 no es suficiente. Las recogidas son más de 2.2 millones de dólares al año. El alegre realmente no establece una razón para reducir los costos administrativos. Durante el periodo de 2000 a 2003, la PUC hizo un montón de trabajo en este tema. Teníamos códigos, eso fue antes de que yo estuviera, pero códigos cubriendo el protocolo para la reembolso de los costos administrativos. La PUC miró los costos de cada agente de recolección, cada empresa, y estableció cuál es el presupuesto y qué sería posible para eso. Y proporcioné una copia del protocolo, que se enactó en abril de 2003, y varios otros códigos que han afectado este tema. Así que hubo un proceso muy largo para determinar cuáles deberían ser los efectos reales, y el protocolo reconoce que las empresas son reembolvidas por sus efectos reales. Así es como debería hacerse, no por deductas arbitrarias de porcentaje plana. Este alegre destruiría el sistema cuidadosamente elaborado en la ley para regular la recogida de E911. El número cinco, la limitación del porcentaje no es razonable. Hay insuficientes y data inadecuadas para justificar la limitación del 5%. Aparentemente, el departamento de la policía de Guam afirma que el 15% es reducido como costes. Eso nunca se presentó a la PUC. Si el departamento de la policía piensa que los costos administrativos son demasiado altos, o alguien más piensa eso, hay un proceso. Ven a la PUC, pide que la PUC lo vea, porque bajo la ley, la PUC tiene control de cuáles deberían ser los costos administrativos. Pero el GFD nunca ha venido a la PUC. Nadie ha venido y nos ha dicho, "Oh, por cierto, ¿puedes mirar los costos? Creemos que son demasiado altos". No se ha hecho. Y la ley en realidad requiere que el departamento de la policía petición a la PUC. Mira la provisión. Tienen que petir a la PUC si piensan que hay un problema con la recogida. Ahora, el alegre depende del informe OPA de 2010. En primer lugar, señalo que eso tiene casi 13 años. Y si miras los datos en el informe, proviene de los años fiscales 2004, 2005, 2006, realmente antiguos. Me submitiría que no es apropiado como práctica legislativa confiar en un estudio tan antiguo para establecer una limitación aquí. Y hay muchos problemas sobre el informe, que entrare. Pero las cantidades totales, como se pointó, los costos administrativos, a medida que la PUC puede determinar, son de alrededor de 144,000 por año. Ahora, si miras recogidas de más de 2.2 millones, no tal cantidad grande, incluso con los costos administrativos, todavía hay más de dos millones de dinero para el fondo E911. El alegre limitaría las deducciones al 5% basado en el hecho de que en 2010, Dakota del Norte, Pennsylvania y Nueva York City estaban reduciendo ese valor. Pero no sabemos cómo sus porcentajes fueron determinados. ¿Fueron financiados los PUCs en esas jurisdicciones como aquí? Algunos estados obtienen grante para cubrir su E911, otros son financiados por fondos gubernamentales. No se está comparando uvas y uvas. Y creo que sin una investigación realmente detallada en esas otras estado, no sabes si son comparables o no. Como señaló el señor Kelly, Guam no es lo mismo que eses jurisdicciones. Es una pequeña base de clientes, es una pequeña cantidad de proveedores comparada con las jurisdicciones en los estados. Así que creo que no es apropiado comparar Guam con esas jurisdicciones sin mucha más investigación. Así que en concordancia con el Acto Orgánico y la ley local que gobierna la Comisión de Peticiones Públicas, la PUC debe determinar los efectos reales de los proveedores de telecomunicación que pueden ser reducidos de la recogida. No es un papel apropiado para el legislador. El alegre 308-36 debe ser rechazado. Si el departamento de la policía tiene preocupaciones con las deducciones por los proveedores, debería abordar esas preocupaciones en una petición a la PUC, como es requerido por la ley. Gracias.
Gracias, abogado Horecki. ¿Puedo ahora llamar al jefe Stone para proveer su testimonio?
Buen día, Madre presidenta y senadores. Gracias por la oportunidad del departamento de la policía de Guam de presentar nuestro testimonio. Mi nombre es Daniel Stone. Soy el jefe de la policía de la policía de Guam. Así que lo que me gustaría hacer es poder presentar a ustedes mi testimonio escrito, que comienza con "La recogida mensual de E911 proporciona financiación para la continuación de la operación de servicios de despacho de emergencia de E911 en Guam. Esta tarifa, que se recoge y remita por los proveedores de comunicación locales, apoya los servicios de emergencia, de policía, EMS y policías. Actualmente, los porcentajes de costos administrativos conservados por estos proveedores son inconsistentes y mayores que las tasas que se evalúan". and higher than the rates that are assessed in other jurisdictions," and referencing the OPA Report Number 2010-06, as Mr. Horeki already identified. "With the Guam Fire Department's next-generation 911 platform slated to be online early next year, this is an opportune time to revisit disparities and conflicts in the collections related to administrative expenses claimed by the different providers. Therefore, it is the intent of the GFD to express support and agreement to amend subsection 12303 Charlie of Article 3, Chapter 12, Title 12 GCA in order to enact universal standards and ensure equity amongst all local telephone and commercial radio service providers." Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next on our panel that has signed up to testify is Dan Tidinko from GTA. Please proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and Senators. My name is Daniel Tidinko, Executive Vice President for Tele Guam Holdings, DBA GTA. First of all, let me congratulate you and your colleagues on your reelections. To those of you who have served and are exiting public service, thank you for your service. And to those who have been newly elected, compliments to you as well. It's very heartening to see the 37th legislature will have a good mix of both new and also seasoned, reasoned hands, hearts, and minds in place to productively address the issues facing our island. Back to the closing business of the 36th here with this bill. After evaluating the measure, it was kind of interesting to read the legislative finding, which asserts that 15% of every dollar collected by telecom providers for E911 has been retained by the service providers for authorized administrative costs. I'm not quite sure where GFD representatives got that figure. Moreover, given reference to a 2010 12-year-old public auditor report on the E911 fund and the Guam Public Utilities Commission administration of the fund, I'm also not sure that the findings and context cited in this measure are timely, given that it is over 12 years old, given that the PUC has enhanced its oversight and responsibilities of the mandate, and given that the author of that 2010 report has been sitting on the Guam PUC as a commissioner for the past several years and has had a direct role in oversight of the E911 collections law. Senator, former Senator Doris Brooks, former public auditor, the author of this OPA report. She sits there with the Guam PUC with Mr. Horeki and a number of the other commissioners. When I read that claim in the legislative findings concerning the 15% administrative retention, I asked internally at our company what all is involved in this E911 surcharge collection and the costs associated with it. Without disclosing confidential and proprietary information that reflects market data share, I can unequivocally state that that assertion is incorrect. I'll note this historically, since the establishment of the E911 law and associated dockets, our administrative costs for collecting, processing, tracking, remitting, and reporting this has averaged about 8.6% annually. So for every dollar collected for E911, what are the associated administrative costs for us? First, we're obligated to maintain the public safety answering point, the PSAP, which is in the law. That PSAP is the access point and call center where emergency and non-emergency calls are handled. Second, we have various personnel in the E911 chain here. IT, which handles all of the billing, which is reflected of the E911 surcharge. Accounting personnel, which is accounts receivable where an employee spends time on the bookkeeping. Accounting personnel, which is accounts payable where an employee spends time on processing payment and getting payment approval. Accounting personnel where an employee spends time at RevTax, remitting the payment to the Treasurer of Guam. Accounting personnel where the employee spends time preparing the monthly and annual reports and sending it to the PUC. Third, we have hard costs for printing on bills and postage, which costs about $7.6,000 monthly. Fourth, we have collections fees for those who we remit E911 collections for monthly, yet have to contend with absorbing loss or collections costs for those who don't pay their bills. But nonetheless, we still remit these payments over to the PUC as required. These are the hard costs justifying our administrative expenses. It's certainly not a profit center, as some may think. Just look at the 2010 OPA report again concerning a telecom operator collecting E911 from its subscribers and contending with the administrative costs. In that particular report, the OPA, public auditor Brooks, then, former senator, colleague of yours, and now PUC Commissioner, she noted, "One service provider told us that the PUC did not provide sufficient guidance regarding their responsibility as collection agents of the 911 surcharge. The provider has assessed its subscribers the surcharge since October 2008, but has not yet remitted the collections to the Department of Administration. According to the company president, their customer base is small, and the cost of billing and collecting the surcharge exceeds what they collect. Thus, they retain the surcharges to recover their administrative costs. According to the company president, as of June 2010, they collected $8,413 in surcharges, but spent $9,450 doing so. We informed the company president that a petition for administrative services should be submitted for PUC's approval before E911 surcharges can be retained. We notified the PUC of this matter, and they've contacted the provider. In September 2010 back then, the PUC and service provider were reviewing the surcharge collections and administrative collections, expenses. To Mr. Horeki's point, has GFD ever petitioned the Guam PUC under Section 2D of the original law to, quote, "determine or to examine the adequacy of the surcharge at any time"? Has GFD ever articulated to the Guam PUC that there's an issue with the bucket established under Public Law 2555, which is used to fund the just and reasonable expenses of operating and maintaining the 911 system? If not, then I'd suggest GFD articulate such and follow the laws it exists, rather than the body reacting to claims that the telecom providers are parsing 15 cents per subscriber account to cover the cost of administering the collection of the E911 surcharge. If there's a need to modify the E911 fee to address costs, then that conversation has to happen. It should also include examination of the expense side over at GFD, particularly since the E911 was subjected to malappropriation in the previous administration. A corrective action was taken by Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio in tandem with the Guam PUC, and in tandem with the FCC, to ensure that the previously misappropriated E911 funds were returned back to GFD. Further, while we're on this, we urge GFD to transmit a bona fide request to all telecom providers on island to transform us from the current analog next-generation 911 system, which the chief just noted may be coming up. I was just talking to Mr. Carrera here from IT&amp;E. At some point in time, when we do get the bona fide request and all of our companies do the procurement for the necessary software and the equipment to integrate with the new 911 system that GFD is going to be putting online, it's permissible under the law for us to recover those costs. I forgot what the true and justifiable costs were. I think Mr. Kelly had noted those, but that's not insignificant. Whether it's IT&amp;E, or GTA, or DOCOMO, it's going to cost us, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of at least half a million dollars each to recover those costs for all of that software and hardware necessary for standing up the next system. We do not believe the fix here on the cost side is the cure-all solution. If there's a need for a separations accounting study to help zero in on what is just and reasonable for telecom providers to retain for administrative costs, then permit the Guam PUC to order such. That separations accounting study would examine accounting methods, procedures, and controls established to gather, record, classify, analyze, summarize, interpret, and present accurate and timely financial data for reporting and compliance with the applicable laws, regulations, and management decisions, and may include subsystems for specific areas such as indirect and other direct costs, such as compensation billing, labor, and general information technology. And it would, of course, be an additional cost to ratepayers ultimately, because somebody's got to pay for that particular docket and that cost study. I really don't think the current retention rate is out of line, given that our consultants and the PUC and our accountants have parsed out that it is justifiable and mirrored in other jurisdictions, given our size. I can say this with regards to our administrative costs. Our accountants did the calculation and considered what I had noted earlier, including billing protocol, programming, billing platform upgrades, and administrative costs incurred monthly for billing and collecting the surcharge, maintaining and delivering the customer database, and expenses incurred by the PUC in conducting regulatory activities with regards to the E911 surcharge. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tidinko. I'd like to welcome Mr. Stephen Conrad from IT&amp;E. You're welcome to provide your oral testimony. Please introduce yourself before you begin.
Okay, good morning. I'm Steve Carrera from IT&amp;E, and good morning, everybody, and thank you for inviting me. We welcome the opportunity to provide comments here on this very important issue. You know, I'd like to start with one issue that Dan noted, is we are about to spend a lot more money to upgrade our systems to comply with the next-generation 911 protocols. We want to make sure that the proposed cap doesn't in any way limit that ability. It's going to cost at least a half million dollars. We would like to see a lot more PUC oversight over how these funds are spent. This is a significant amount of money, and it's something that really impacts the whole There's an ongoing procurement now to upgrade the system. It's been awarded to a contractor. There are follow-on procurements that, you know, we really don't know what the state of it is. We look forward to working with GFD better to understand what the process is and participate directly in that process. As far as the administrative fees, we would prefer to see a higher cap. We don't think it's necessarily, we're running somewhere between less than five and sometimes over five because it depends on the amount of prepaid numbers which affects the collection. So in a pandemic, the prepaid numbers were down, so there were fewer collections for 911 because usually you have a bigger bucket there. So we don't see it as a problem. Our costs are fairly limited to the administrative cost, including the billing system, the people on the collection side. We really don't see any issue in terms of that figure being, I don't know where the 15% came from. I think that's probably very high. Again, but we're not seeing that, so we don't necessarily see that as an issue. But we would certainly, as Dan mentioned, we need more interaction with GFD and see what they're doing on this program so we can make it work better for the community, for everybody, and the carriers, because, you know, we bear a big portion of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrera. Now that the panel has presented their testimony, I'm going to open it up for any senators that might have any questions or comments, and I'll begin with the main sponsors, Senator Taidigui. If you have any questions or comments for the panel, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here to testify. It's obvious that we, you know, based on the comments that were made here today, that I think a roundtable would be in order right now to go over some of these comments that were made to make sure there's a win-win. But, you know, as far as PUC is concerned, you know, it's the same PUC that decides the rate on power, you know, the same rate for other things at the port. And there is nothing that would stop this legislature from making changes to rates, especially when the law was created to collect this kind of fee in law, in Guam law. So nothing stops us from changing what the Guam law says. What we want to do is make sure that there's fairness across the board. But when you start seeing other jurisdictions, you know, only charging 2%, you know, 3%, and here in a report, whether it was done in 2010, doesn't make a difference. If I finally got some information from PUC on what is being charged currently, how much percentage is taken out and not given to the Guam Fire Department to continue to do what the law says and cover their emergency system. If I had that information, I would have brought it here, but unfortunately, PUC refuses to give me that information on what percentages has been taken out in the last, let's say, 2022, 2021, 2023, because it fluctuates so much. Whether there is a state that has over, you know, 2 million people, there's a percentage taken from that to cover any kind of cost. Guam doesn't have that many people, but there's a percentage that's taken to cover the cost for these carriers. To what? Administer the funding? So a company, I'm not going to name a company, but a company takes a dollar off of every charge. That dollar is then given to GFD to cover their 911, and then administrative cost for that carrier. The administrative cost. When you were talking about a new system that's going to be put in place, I greatly appreciate that. Technology is moving so quickly, making things a lot easier, but to expect that dollar to cover your expenses as a business? I don't think so. My concern to Mr. Horeki is you brought the Organic Act of Guam into play on your comments. Are you saying that if we were to pass this bill, that we are jeopardizing the Organic Act, or that we are going against the Organic Act?
Thank you.
For the record?
Thank you, Senator. Under the Organic Act, the PUC is an independent ratemaking authority. And the legislature has already delegated these issues to the PUC, including the expenses for the providers and the surcharge rates. So I have to say in general, of course, the legislature has broad powers, but if you look at the way the system is set up, the PUC is supposed to be the body that determines all these type of issues, when it goes to rates, when it goes to expenses allowed. That is an area that the legislature, if it wishes to be consistent with the Organic Act and existing law, it should not be involved in. That is how I read those provisions. And I wanted to respond to one thing. You said the PUC hasn't provided you with information. That is not correct. You wrote me a number of months ago.
Right.
I provided you extensive materials, everything I could find on it. And the most recent determination we have of what percentage the administrative expenses represents is 2011 to 17. And in that, I found in looking over the history that it's approximately 6.5 to slightly over 7% that constitute the administrative expenses. That is the best information I had available, and I've provided that in my testimony.
Yeah.
I also did today, or previous to today, I asked each of the carriers to come up with their figures, which they've done, as to what their administrative expenses are. So I feel the PUC has provided information and has cooperated fully.
Yes, thank you so much for that, Mr. Horeki. In fact, I received $199,000 is what was collected, but it didn't break down the years on how much, every year, you would take, they would take a certain percentage. Was it 5%? Was it 15%? Was it 7%? So breaking it down in every year and just showing the inconsistency of what money is taken out and not given to GFD, you know, it just, there's inaccurate data that's been provided to us. So hopefully during a roundtable discussion, we can sit down and actually get those numbers and look at them to make sure there's just fairness amongst it as we move forward.
Senator, our figures are consistent, pretty much. They don't vary that much from year to year.
So you're saying it never fluctuated?
Every year, it seems to have been, that I have been able to get the data, 6.5 to slightly over 7. The collections in recent years have been very stable, too. Generally, 2 million to recently, it's always over 2 million, and recently, 2.2 million.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Horeki. Again, my concern was just the lack of information, and I think a roundtable is definitely in order to come to fruition, especially, Mr. Kelly, you brought up the, do you have your copy of your testimony? Was it provided?
I didn't. I didn't. I didn't.
No, it wasn't. I didn't get Dan Tidinko's testimony. I appreciate if you can.
I'll email it to you. Mine's electronic.
To all senators, please.
Sure.
Yeah, so they have a copy of it. And it mentioned about what exactly the E911 is supposed to be used for. You elaborated on that.
Sure.
And but the law, if you look at the law, where it was created on this and what it could be spent for, it does carry quite a bit of... it could be spent for, and it does carry quite a bit of different areas. Can you just a little bit elaborate on that?
Well, first off, just let me make a couple quick comments on my background. For 20 years, I have been a certified emergency number professional with NINA, which is the standards organization for 911 systems. And the bill you're talking about was actually written by Carlotta Leon Guerrero, and I think we did, and I say we because I collaborated with her, and her staffer then was Nestor LaCanto. We wrote the law at that time based upon what was valid at that point. And it is supposed to cover the actual cost of collection. At that point, there was very little cost for carriers to provide 911 because we did not have the geolocation. It was primarily just a connection through GTA, and those were put in. As we're moving forward now, as has been stated by the carriers, there's going to be a lot more cost to the carriers. The federal government, both in code and regulations of the Federal Communication Commission, allow the direct costs that are exclusively used and commercially reasonable for providing 911 service, including the equipment, software that's exclusively for 911, the interconnection fees to be a reimbursable expense out of 911 collections. Something, if it's not exclusively 911, it should not come out of the 911 fund. Actually, something that concerned me that the chief said is they're using this fund for emergency services and fire services. It cannot be other than maybe the dispatching of it, but the actual fire and emergency medical services should have their own funding mechanism. 911 should be exclusively for operating the PSAP, operating the equipment for the 911 system, and what the carriers' expenses in putting into the 911 system. And we can get into that in a roundtable, and I can maybe help define this, but that's what the federal law says, and we need to be consistent with that in what we're doing here also. Maybe I confused things instead of answer.
No, no, no. You were clear, you were clear, and thank you so much, because, you know, times have changed, you know, from that, since the law was written, and of course, we're here to adjust to that. Time chief is.
But, but I do want to make sure that we provide, and I put this in the testimony, and we can get into more detail, that carriers should have the availability to use 911 funds for those things that are exclusive. Now, one thing that I did put in here in the testimony also is TITO has got the contract with GFD to do the 911 system. I certainly think this was a good decision, because I don't think the government of Guam or the Fire Department has the expertise to maintain the current technology required in servers for the next generation 911. That being said, they have contracted to TITO to provide the services. This overall is good, but TITO does not have an oversight on what they charge carriers for connection, or what, as a matter of fact, they're charging GFD coming out of the fund, and TITO is providing telecommunications services. And under the Telecommunication, Telecommunication Act of 2002 of Guam, anybody providing telecommunications services or reselling them must have a certificate of authority, and I question whether we should not require that of TITO since they're providing this to all of the carriers and GFD, and also add an oversight of the commission on this. And then maybe the commission can address the certificate of authority.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Madam Chair, yet the recommendation, too, is also to have a roundtable that we spoke about earlier. Looking forward to that. Chief Stone, if there's nothing you want to say, anything you want to say at this point, but I do want a copy of yours. I know you have a hard copy. If I can get a copy of that right now, I appreciate it. But other than that, I appreciate the opportunity and for you to be here. It's about making Guam a better place to live and, and a safer place to live, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidigui. Senator Brown, do you have any questions or comments?
Sorry, I have to note the obvious. Welcome to my Republican colleagues. Good morning. This is what it was like when we had a Republican majority. We actually showed up to hearing. I don't know where the rest of our Democratic colleagues are a week after the election, but here we are. I do note the important thing that is brought to light here, because I think at the end of the day, we really want to know how much of the E-911 money is actually going to the Guam Fire Department. Obviously, the biggest priority is ensuring that the service is available, and we understand the upgrades are being put in place, and yes, we know the history, you know, money being diverted and the government's nothing new. Whether it's right or wrong, it's not as uncommon as we'd like to think. And I was there, I'm sure, when we voted for this bill to create the E-911 system, so that we have, you know, reliability with regards to our community to be able to get the services when they needed. Obviously, these things are life, actually a matter of life and death. I'm sure, Chief Stone, you will agree, so I, I think we can appreciate that. Obviously, also, at least in listening to what has come out this morning, there's obviously a need to further discuss this issue, so that at the end of the day, we know exactly how much money can go to the Guam Fire Department and actually what the costs are involved for the carriers that are having to provide the service. I mean, at the end of the day, as a consumer, I get a, I get a bill, and it can have a whole listing of all the things I'm paying for, like my power bill or my, you know, but yet I pay a single amount at the end of the day. So all that goes into listing out those bills, do I know? No. As a customer, all I know is I pay, you know, probably more for this than I actually pay for my power bill, believe it or not. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but with regards to your work, Chief Stone, and the money that you're getting, because it's not a, you know, when you actually look at the amount you're receiving, it's, it's not a lot. I mean, for what, what the, what the need is out there, where are we with regards to procuring the new system? How far away are we from that being in place?
Thank you for the question, Senator Brown. So the good thing is the project is, is well underway. As a matter of fact, just this past month, in our new call space, we were able to have all the furnishing associated with the call center and, and the needs of it installed. The week of December 5th, we actually have our computer-aided dispatching contractor coming out to do the install for the, the software and the associated computer hardware that goes along with it. So we're moving along pretty well. I mean, obviously, we wanted to cut over from our legacy system to the next-gen system by the end of the year, but unfortunately, our vendor has also been plagued with the supply chain challenges that we've been experiencing throughout the nation. So, so that has slid right a little bit as far as launching. We are anticipating by Q1 of next year for them to be able to cut over from the next-gen, I mean, correction, from the legacy E-911 system to our next-gen solution.
Do you, do you, are you given an annual basis any information with regards to the breakdown of the revenues that are collected for E-911 and what's actually going to the Guam Fire Department? Or are you just given an annual amount and said, well, this is what you're receiving to administer the program?
The latter is correct, Senator, yes. So we just get a basic, this is what we're getting.
Do you think the PUC should provide a report that lists out what those amounts are, just so that you have that for your reference? Because I guess the issue is, when this came up a few months ago, was, you know, even to our awareness, is the inconsistency. I mean, every, every business has their way of operating, but, you know, you do have to wonder, what, what is the difference between, you know, why is one maybe 5%, one 7%? You know, and their operational costs, why is that? I mean, I would have that question. That's something we would want the PUC to ask, so that we don't have a fairly high amount that we're kind of questioning going, you know, to administrative costs versus the actual money going to the E-911 system, which is ultimately why, you know, this fee was put in place.
Right. And so to your question, Senator, I think it would be, you know, it doesn't hurt to have more information. I will submit that I, I don't know the line of business of our telco providers, and I, and I won't pretend to try and get in their lane of business. At the end of the day, I know that we want to be able to support this system. We do not want to return to any, to any remnants of the state of affairs we've been existing in with our legacy system, even though there's been several attempts to try and, try and upgrade the system. At the end of the day, I just want to make sure we're providing the best service to our community.
Do you have any ongoing dialogue with, with the PUC concerning your E-911 funding at all?
So to Mr. Horeki's, no. I would be less than, if I said I'd had any conversation with the PUC, other than casual conversations when I've met some of them out in, out in the community.
Is there anything as a result of this hearing you'd further inquire that Mr. Horeki has mentioned, perhaps, because the Guam Fire Department has not directly brought that issue to their attention?
I, I would, I would submit that that's, that's a fair comment, and then I'm, I'm actually in agreement with Senator Tello's, Senator Taidigui's offer of having a roundtable discussion so that we can continue to have better, so we can better the dialogue, I think. I think that's kind of what's been missing. And then, you know, GFD will own some of that as well, but just some of the information that we get is very, is very straightforward. We don't know what the, the actual administrative costs are associated with those collections. We just get what the amount is that's collected and remitted to us.
Well, I think it would be good to know, because, you know, we certainly don't want to get to the point, and of course, others will say, well, the alternative is you simply raise rates.
Right.
And we've been doing that in a time of, you know, we're, we're not where we need to be in our economy. We're certainly not where we were several years ago, and as the, you know, federal money dries up, I think we're going to see that reality. But I think we ultimately are going to want to know exactly how much of that is actually going to the E-911 program and how much is going to administrative costs, so I think that would be helpful. And I agree, I, I think we need to have a roundtable. Mr. Horeki, I just wanted to ask you, I mean, you, you referencing you had information up till 2017 with regards to, you have no current, anything more current than that?
Yes, thank you, Senator, and I'm, I'm glad to tell you why.
Okay.
So for years, every year, the PUC prepared a report on E-911, and we had exactly the information that, that you've mentioned, the total collections, the administrative expenses by carrier. And what the PUC would do would be to hire a consultant. The, the PUC is not, we're not an economics organization that determines that kind of thing. This is an accounting function. So we'd hire an accountant, and we'd prepare and issue an annual report, which set forth that exact information. However, the legislature deleted the requirement from the law that the PUC prepare an annual report. So in 2017, we advised the Speaker, the Governor, OPA, I believe, that that requirement was no longer in the law and that the PUC would no longer prepare such reports. And I would say, I don't think the PUC is the right body to do that work, because, again, we just have to hire an outside consultant, and those fees, by the way, are always deducted from 911. It, it ran about 15,000 to 20,000 a year. So whenever we hire a consultant at the PUC, then those expenses come out of the, of the collection. So I don't really think we were the appropriate body, but that's, that's why we stopped doing it.
Well, I don't, I wasn't here in 2017. We'd have to go back. I don't know what the logic was in doing that, maybe to reduce the cost, I have no idea. But I think it would be good on an annual basis to still have that information collected, and maybe in the course of the roundtable, maybe it could be determined. I don't know who else would do that research outside of the PUC. We don't have any other entity, right? But I, I appreciate you elaborating on that, because at least that provides some clarification with regards to it. And again, for the carriers, I mean, we understand, I mean, there, there's additional work involved in doing this, and I, again, we just want some sense of reasonableness and some closer degree of consistency in what those rates are, because I don't, I don't, you know, how do we come to that determination? I mean, if I'm going to determine, I could keep, you know, well, let me add this, and add this, and add this, and this, and this, because I get to charge it and I'm going to be reimbursed, so I might have a tendency to want to just add a few more things that maybe the next carrier's not. I don't know, but I, I think that's something, we still want some sense of transparency and accountability with regards to these particular funds.
Could, could I add one comment? I think the, the expenses and the collections have been pretty constant the last few years. My research indicated about 144,000 a year for the administrative expenses, but when you talk about collections of 2.2 million, that means still there's over 2 million that actually goes to 911.
Well, but again, it's also been brought up that, that the upgrading to the new system's going to cost even more money, and if that's going to be extracted out of the E-911, you know, is that going to be how much and what's going to be left after? I think those are very important questions that need to be asked and answered, so that we actually know at the end of the day, in this particular case with this upgrade, what's going to be left in the system? Because the alternative is in this climate, oh, let's raise rates again, that's the solution. You know, I'm sure our, our community's not going to be as welcoming with regards to that. You have something you want to add?
Yeah, I wanted to make just one comment. Having been very involved in the writing of the bill that established the 911 fund when it was introduced by Senator Leon Guerrero, we stated in that law that there may be shortfalls in the collections for the actual expenses in operation of the PSAPs, the 911 centers and equipment. And what was in the original law was that the budget for the Fire Department would be reviewed by the PUC, and if there is a shortfall in the funding of the dollar, that that would be forwarded to the legislature for additional funding from the legislature. We knew there would be times that there would be shortage, just like during an upgrade like this, and there's also, by the way, federal grants that are sizable and so on that can go to this also, and by taking the grants plus the collections and then maybe some additional funding, that makes it whole. So let's not look at that $1 as the only thing available to fund our 911 system.
I appreciate that, but I don't get any impression that anywhere, much of any dialogue of that has been happening unless somebody else can enlighten me. I don't, I don't gauge that.
Well, that's because, as Attorney Horeki said, they took away the oversight of the budget of the Fire Department, which they used to have. I think this was taken out on a bill that was by Senator Ada. When he, after he'd been governor, came back to the legislature, he was petitioned that the Fire Department didn't want to submit the budgets to the PUC. And the whole purpose of that was so if there's a shortfall, that could be forwarded to the, in fact, there was supposed to be an annual report on the budget to the legislature and to the Governor, and that was taken out, I think it was around 2002, I don't remember the exact date, but to me, that was a, not a good thing, because I felt we still needed to have that budget reviewed to be able to make shortfall notices to the legislature, and that was taken out.
Well, I mean, the dialogue this morning does bring to light that there are a lot more questions as a result of it. I mean, ultimately, as I mentioned, the intent is to ensure we can still fund the E-911 system. So I look forward to, you know, if it's this legislature, the next one, whichever, that we do have the dialogue, and probably we can also, since we also have the opportunity to request of the public auditor, maybe we just request an update and have a new audit report done on what these expenditures are, so that we can, we can get a more current figure with regards to that. Thank you for coming to testify. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to have questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I polled the gentleman to my right, and including one of the co-sponsors, Senator Tony Ada. Did you have any questions? No. So the, the three gentlemen don't have any questions or, or comments for the panel. Welcome, Senator Duñez also. So with that, we are going to call, yes, excuse me, Senator Taidigui, you are, you're welcome to make closing remarks before we call this to order.
Yeah, just short, I do realize there are other bills ahead of us. I do like, for the record, that this bill be held off, and we have that roundtable discussion first before moving forward, so I ask the committee to please hold off on placing this bill forward until we do. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Looking forward to seeing you soon.
Duly noted, and with that being said, I want to thank all of you on the panel for coming today to testify, and those who have submitted written testimony as well. We will now consider Bill 308-36 duly heard, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which will be Bill 331. Thank you, everyone. And we'll just take a moment's recess while we gather the information for Bill 331. The next item on our agenda is Bill Number 331-36 LS, which was introduced by Senator James C. Moylan. It is an act to amend Section 6206 of Chapter 6, Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Section 6206-2 to Chapter 6, Title IV, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing penalties for agency heads who fail to comply with a compensation increase mandated by statute for any employee promoted competitively or by reclassification or temporarily. We have this morning Senator Duñez, who will be presenting on behalf of Senator Moylan. So I now welcome Senator Duñez to make your opening statement. Thank you.
So just want to say, Madam Chair, and just for the listening public and those that are here today, Senator Moylan is in DC currently receiving training as per his election to Congress. So I'm just going to read his statement, sponsor's statement into the record. So basically, it goes as follows. "Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak on Bill 331-36. For many years, hundreds of government employees, including firefighters, law enforcement employees, and others, have been detailed to work positions above their pay grades. The practice of detailed assignments, if held for over 30 days, should provide for differential pay. Unfortunately, these employees have not received them. The practice is more commonly used as it's considered more cost-effective." The practice is more commonly used, as it's considered, more cost-effective as opposed to going through the merit system. The sad reality is that these detailed employees are often denied the compensation they earned and are more often than not deprived of the grievances filed or the government filing to hold a hearing. This bill simply provides for checks and balances for such details. It is important to note, seven, that detailed involves an increase in job duties, which in some cases, temporary eight promotion, which may last for months, if not years. And hence, is paramount that nine employees obtain the differential. The act merely establishes this balance by ten, placing the onus on the agency head to assure the detailed employee is eleven properly compensated in accordance with the law. Thank you, and I look forward to the hearing from the panel. I believe, as the sponsor's statement was written, it is the sections in the law that are being referred to in terms of steps and other detailed assignments." So with that, that is the sponsor's statement, Madam Chair, and I look forward to hearing from, he looks forward as well as we look forward, to hearing from the representatives who are here today to discuss this bill. Sidus Massey, Madam Chair.
Sidus Massey, Senator Chris, and we have today signed up to testify orally Mr. Edward Byrne and Shane Nata. Are you also going to be providing oral testimony? Okay. So I'll have, invite you to begin your testimony. Please begin by introducing yourself, please, and you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, Senators. My name is Edward Byrne, Director of the Department of Administration. I'm here this morning with Shane Gutter, who is the Personnel Services Administrator and is responsible for running the Human Resources Department. Department of Administration has some very serious concerns with this bill. Let me say from, from the beginning that it is certainly the view and desire and way of operation of DOA that government employees should be paid for the work they do. And if they're working, for whatever reason, above their nominal pay grade, they certainly should be paid for that within the regulations. And the regulations provide for a period of detail to be, you know, 90 days, and there is an opportunity for extension. That extension has to be reviewed by, and eventually, if necessary, granted by the Department of Administration. But it shouldn't be haphazard. There is no excuse for it to be haphazard. And as I go through the bill, I find that the bill itself really doesn't deal with that issue. First of all, I believe this is mainly a legacy issue. We will speak about it, or I'll ask Shane to speak about it in more detail in a minute. But we have come across some cases in some agencies where people are doing jobs above their nominal pay grade and have been doing so for a period. We do not condone that. We wish to fix that as quickly as possible. But I think you have to ask yourselves maybe, why did that happen? It probably is the result of a budget constraint. When budgets are set, certainly over the last few years, budgets have been set based upon warm bodies. A detail takes place when, for whatever reason, the warm body isn't in the department. It might be a extended sickness, or it might indeed be a long-term disability. The warm body is counted in the, in the number of people that are budgeted for, but the additional expense of detailing that the person who takes that position is not budgeted for. It obviously makes sense for there to be room in budgets for that to take place. If an employee feels aggrieved, there is a grievance, there is a grievance procedure, it's a well-established grievance procedure, and we follow it scrupulously. There is always the opportunity, and we will make sure that this is made more readily available to people. But there's always the opportunity for an employee to contact HR unofficially, and HR will always help. We want to make sure that employees are well-treated. DOA takes pride in making sure that employees are treated as they should be. The way to remedy this, though, is not to punish the agency director. In some cases, the agency director may or may not know this was happening. And I think in the case that I'm thinking of, that the agency director didn't know it was happening until it was brought to his attention. And having been brought to his attention, it was brought to our attention, and DOA is working to, to deal with that. Frankly, it's hard enough to get people to step up to run these departments, to put barriers in the way that, and the way this bill is written, there doesn't seem to be any quasi-judicial procedure to the whole process. There just seems to be, and it may be an assumption, it may be, I really don't know how the process is envisaged to work, but it just seems to be a, a jump to some kind of automatic, I mean, the word automatic is there, automatic reduction in salary without any process to know whether that was indeed warranted or not. DOA, as, as I said, and I will continue to say, wants to make sure that all government personnel are appropriately compensated. In the case of a detail, we're asking a, an employee to step up and very often be their own supervisor. That's not a light decision. We don't take it lightly. And on the occasions, and on the other side of this, of this problem, we have another autonomous agency that seems to have a large number of people on detail, and we're trying to deal with that too. On being requested to review these, we are taking our responsibilities very seriously and trying to find out why the agency seems to operate in that way. So in conclusion, before I ask Shane to make his remarks, I want, please, Senators, you to understand that we, we will, DOA, will continue to operate to make sure that people, for whatever reason, whether it's a detail or some other reason, are appropriately compensated for the job they do. But the way to do that is to work through it methodically, not to place a, a barrier, not to, not to effectively create a disincentive for the agency director to either look the other way or not deal with it, but to make sure that the dialogue between DOA and the responsive agency continues. And you have my assurance that we will do that. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Shane, did you care to add to that testimony? You may proceed, but please introduce yourself first.
Thank you, Madam Chair and the Senators. My name is Shane Nata. I'm the Personnel Services Administrator for DOA, Human Resources. Yeah, just to add a little to that, you know, just looking at the bill and what the law requires, you know, most of the processes mentioned, right, promotions competitively, reclassifications or details, they all have their own procedures attached to it. The promotions in and of themselves, the competitive ones, I don't observe any real issues on that outside of, you know, usual processing for budget purposes and GG ones and, and things. Reclassifications, when we do those, generally departments move pretty quickly on them, right? Because it, it does take a while for us to get a desk audit done and out and have findings, but it becomes official at that point. I think the details are kind of where a lot of the issue is, right? And especially over the last four or five years, details, you know, a lot of employees have been called to step up to other positions. In the past, DOA had relied on an AG opinion to go ahead and vet what we called promised compensation at the time, right? And that allowed us to take these claims in and take a look at it based on what the employee is saying. A subsequent AG had then rescinded it based on an updated opinion. So we no longer had a basis to do that review or ask departments to compensate employees based on our findings. So right now, let's say we do a desk audit on an employee, and we do find that an employee's been doing it for a more permanent basis and not so temporary, we can, we can mention that and have it documented, but DOA doesn't have the ability to compel the agency to pay them for that time. We're, we're looking at a prospective adjustment, right, to position and pay. So I think once, once we lost the ability to, you know, ask departments saying, hey, these employees are due this amount of money for work performed, that kind of started making everything back up, right? And, you know, at times, it's not, our observations are, you know, in, in some situations, like when agencies aren't able to backfill due to budget shortfalls or whatnot, they, they do ask employees to step up. It does take them a while to acknowledge that, you know, processes have to be followed to properly promote them. In those situations, you know, once it's brought to our attention, we try to rectify it pretty quickly. But outside of that, yeah, in the last few years, it's been a lot of employees stepping up to do bigger jobs based on the pandemic. But now we're starting to get, I think, more of a feel of, of what's come out of that, right? There has been a lot of attrition, right, in the agencies, and a lot of employees have, have been promoted. They've taken the helm and they have been promoted. But I'm sure there are others out there that need to be addressed. So just to add to that, I think if there was a move to do something, which would be to clarify the process that employees could use to get to that end result. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nata. I'd like to ask the, Mr. Senator Duennas, who's sitting in for Senator Moylan, if you have any questions or comments to the panel?
Sidus Massey, Madam Chair, I wanted to make one clarification as I read the testimony verbatim. For those that are following along, maybe that are listening or may listen to the testimony subsequent to this, for Bill 331-36 LS, it is Section 1. And then on page 2, the reference was for line 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. So that kind of encapsulates what is the findings here. Mr. Byrne, I guess my question would be, because I've had to deal with this a number of different times as being a cabinet member in the executive branch, I know that under my leadership, we always compensated individuals past the 30 days. You mentioned that it's generally may be a result of budgetary constraints. What concerns me is, is that I'm sure you've done this during the time that you've been the DOA Director, and I'm sure the fiscal team has put in controls which allow for reserve and, and the like, so that agencies operate within their budget. I know many agencies incur lapses to include the salaries of those who are not being promoted but are otherwise warm bodies. I, I don't know that I'm comfortable with that characterization of budgetary constraints, knowing the tools that you have available to yourself. And so I'd just like you to elaborate a little bit more on that because I don't think that that would be a legislative problem with having passed a budget in the way because you could also come back to us for supplemental if duties were to exceed requirements. You have transfer authority, you have many tools in the toolbox. So I just was a little concerned because I don't, I think employees, and I know we have union representation here, that might have testimony as well. I mean, it concerns me also that beyond that 30 days, there may be even Department of Labor complaints and things that can come subsequent to that if not compensated for. So I just want you to elaborate a little bit more on the budgetary issue because I think you have enough tools to handle that.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you. Just, just to make sure there's no misunderstanding, I'm certainly not advocating anything different than the intent of the bill that people who do undertake these positions should be so compensated. As far as a budgetary comment is concerned, that, you know, that may be true overall when you're looking at the budget, but the, the transfer can only take place when one department has exceeded their budget and another department has fallen short of their budget. That generally can only take place adequately after the end of the year, when those budgets have been finalized or the actual expenditure against those budgets have been finalized. So yes, you're right, there is a mechanism. The mechanism, though, doesn't always operate at the point that it needs to operate. And, you know, agencies are always dealing with balancing budgets. And I'm sure I see indeed from, from my department, there's a lot of reallocation between object codes during the course of the year as we try and adjust the budgets to meet the very point that you made, is that the, it's a budget and expenditure almost certainly will differ from the budget and adjustments therefore need to be made. But that's not always very easy to ascertain, especially very early in the year, because you really don't know, you're, you're operating from the budgetary assumption and you really don't know how it's going to turn out.
With that, Madam Chair, I guess I would just close my line with this statement. I can certainly understand your concern with the proposed remedy, but I guess I'll have, having been fortunate to have been elected into office once again during the next budget cycle, I'm sure to bring this up because the fact is, is that employees who are going to underfill positions that they're assigned to past that 30-day requirement should be compensated, and that should be part of the overall plan of any administration or any fiscal manager. With that, Madam Chair, Sidus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Chris Duennas. We've, we're joined today by Mr. Robert Koss of the GFT, and I will invite you to provide some testimony, as you signed up to provide written testimony, oral testimony today. Please proceed, begin by introducing yourself, please.
Well, good morning, Senate. My name is Robert Koss, and I rushed down here as soon as I learned this hearing was going on. I'm sorry for not being here sooner. I actually approached many of you senators personally, requesting for this legislation to be enacted. This, I work at the Guam Federation of Teachers, and this is probably my most frequently recurring grievance that's happening today. It is our impression that during this administration, they have utilized the detail assignment process to evade promotions. In other words, we don't promote employees, we'll just detail them to higher positions as those positions become vacant. That's my perception. I don't know that that's the policy or the official way things are done, but from where I sit, that's how it does appear. Why would they do that? Because a detailed assignment is roughly half the price of a full-on promotion, so there is a savings there. It also keeps that employee in perpetual probationary status. They can be returned back to the, promoted back to their former position at any time as long as we have them in a detailed assignment. We brought these cases before the commission over and over and over again. We have received different responses. These are classification compensation issues. The remedy rests with DOA, CSC has no jurisdiction. Or it's not a detailed assignment because they didn't document it. Or it's not a detailed assignment because it went beyond the allowable 90-day limit. Whatever the excuse might be, in that particular instance, we have yet to prevail at the commission on this issue. And yet, it is cut and dry. It is in both law and rules and regulations, twice in the law, once in 6GCA or 4GCA Chapter 6, and the other in 4GCA at 4117, I believe. So, you know, it is both law and rule, and yet we see a non-compliance. Conversations with your agents. Conversations with your agency heads tell us that if there's no penalty, why should they bother to comply? And so, you know, this is the kind of frustration that I deal with every day. And because there does not seem to be a willingness to comply with the law and rules, I've come to you and asked that you introduce legislation to tell us who these people are, all of them, so we can deal with the whole group at one time. I believe there are hundreds, if not thousands. I think it was a former fire chief testified at the Civil Service Commission that all of the firefighters are working above step. They're all working at a position classification higher than what they're paid for. Firefighter 1, functioning as specialist. Captains functioning as battalion chiefs. Lieutenants running the fire station as a captain. This is the way. And I think that the fire isn't limited just to them. We see it in nursing, we see it in DOC. Many, many agencies are taking advantage of detailed assignments. And that's why I said it seems to be the policy of the administration, that rather than promote employees, just simply detail them when the positions become vacant. This allows management to skip the hiring process. It eliminates competition. Management can pick and choose their supporters to fill these positions. There are a lot of reasons why we need the legislation. But I know that in talking to the senators, there was a pushback on the portion of the legislation that I asked for, which was the enforcement provision. I don't think that you will get cooperation from the administration without enforcement. And so that's why I asked that it be there, because I've been told, if there's no penalty for breaking the law, why should I be concerned with the law? So it needs to be there. There has to be consequences for breaking the law. And so let's ask the agency heads not to change any rules, just tell us who the people are who've been detailed, and then we can ensure that they get paid. And if they fail to do so, of course, let's provide consequences for that. I didn't prepare a formal presentation, like I said, I just came down here as soon as I found out about the hearing, but I am open to any questions that you have about this issue. We do have one going on at GPD today. I just got the email back, says she received her response at step 1. What do I do now? So another, we're bringing this one forward as a grievance. We've tried personnel actions, we've tried post audit, we've tried a lot of things, but nothing has yet prevailed. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Koss. I'm going to now invite any of my senators to the right, Senator Ada, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shane, how many individuals do you know are detailed to higher positions that haven't been compensated or have exceeded the 30 days? Do you have that number available?
No, not currently, Senator. We don't, you know, a lot of it, if it does happen, we get it at the tail end to process it, right, with the GG1. So there are some procedures in departments where they can plan for it, but a lot of times if someone just left the department right away, they backfill immediately, but we don't have a solid number on that right now.
And I heard both testimonies from you and Mr. Burns about budgetary constraints and budget issues. However, you know, these past years, I think the budget has been really workable, 800 million, 900 million, billion-dollar budget. So I think that when we get folks that have been stepping up to the plate to do the job, I think it's the government's responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, to pay these employees what they are worth. You know, I own a private business, and I bet that if I don't pay my employees what is due just to them, my company would be taken to Department of Labor, I would face fines, penalties, and then I would have to pay the employee. I think government needs to be put in that same position, to where they need to step up to the plate and start paying our people what they have been detailed for. And I think it, this, you know, it goes back to this administration or previous administrations, whatever. Let's start paying our people for what they worked. And I think it starts from the top down. And if the governor, the lieutenant governor, and every department head in agency that comes before this body for reappointment to the cabinet, I think that should be the question of the 37 Guam Legislature, to ask every department head in agency, are you going to pay your employees what they've been detailed to or assigned? And if not, hold them accountable. I mean, if private sector employees are held accountable to the, public sector employers are held accountable to their employees, government should be held accountable as well. And I think that we need to be more transparent as to how many individuals are detailed to different agencies and departments in higher positions than what they are being paid, so that we can justly compensate them. At a billion-dollar budget, I don't see a reason why, I don't see any reason why our people can't be compensated. I'm not here to, you know, this has been a longstanding issue, Mr. Koss has brought it up, and in the past several years, I have no reason to believe that budget is an issue, none whatsoever. Because if they can give pay raises to unclassified employees and department heads, then I'm sure we can give our classified employees what is due just to them in stepping up for a detailed assignment. And if our government does not want to pay these employees on those detailed assignments, then put them back to where they belong, so that they don't have to have the stress and worries about what's going on in a department or agency and not being just compensated for it. So that's all I ask of you. And, you know, let's start, if you can't do it right previously, let's start doing it right. Let's start doing the people right. Let's do our government right to show that, yes, we are just and accountable, and that we will be held to a higher standard. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown?
Just for the edification of the public, I mean, we can assign an employee a step up for 30 days. If it exceeds 90 days, right, Department of Administration has to concur on it. The department head would have to justify what, you know, extenuating circumstances exist as to why that employee should be continued in that position. Of course, the employee cannot assign themselves, right? It would have to be the head of the department to make the request and authorize them to be placed in that position for that period of time. So why is there difficulty in addressing compensation? Because if there's an issue of budget, then perhaps that department director should not have asked that employee to step up to the plate if they're not going to compensate them. Because it really puts the employee at a tremendous disadvantage. You know, they're being asked to perform the work. Of course, there's always the hope, wow, maybe this gives me an opportunity for more experience, I can add this to my resume, maybe hopefully I'll be considered for that promotion. So I can understand from the employee's perspective why they may do it, but at the other end, if they're not simply being compensated once they exceed that timeframe, why is that? If I can ask you, Mr. Burns.
Well, there really is no difference between us, Senator Brown or Senator Ada. We at DOA entirely agree that no one should be asked to do something above their, the position for which they applied for and were granted. No one should be asked to do anything beyond the, as you say, the 30 days. Sometimes there is a matter of degree, and it has happened, that an employee will take upon himself, this is a response to what people, why some people get, they can't appoint themselves. Sometimes diligent people take upon themselves a task which isn't in their job description because they feel that's the right thing to do. Sometimes they don't tell either their supervisor or the head of that department, that's what they've done, it just happens, right? We encourage people to speak up. We don't want people to do this work, especially if it's not compensated. And anybody doing additional work obviously should verify that that work is actually needed or authorized before they actually do it. But it, the general principle, you know, it shouldn't happen, you know, unfortunately, people are all human, and, you know, it's not necessarily black and white much as we'd like it to be. There are shades of gray as to whether somebody is doing something beyond their job description, because a job description cannot be fully authoritative, that just can't happen, either in the public sector or in the private sector. But in general, there's no difference between us. We want people to be paid for the work they do.
I understand, but I'm saying, if, I mean, I can appreciate an employee who might say, oh, I should be doing this or I want to do this, that's a little different, and I would look at it differently as a head of an agency versus specifically being tasked officially to fulfill that responsibility. I mean, there's got to be a formal mechanism. I mean, you know, I might argue, I come to work an hour early, I should be paid for that hour. Well, if I didn't request you to be there for that hour and I've not tasked you to perform a job, you know, you might argue, oh, no, you've got to compensate that employee. Or, you know, if you're asking them to come in 15 minutes earlier, you've got to compensate them. But if it's something specifically that's been requested, then obviously there's an obligation. If it's a formal request for them to step up to a higher task or higher position, to assist or fulfill the mission of the agency, then by all means, it should be the responsibility of that department head who's authorizing that to address the proper compensation.
Yeah, we all work with deadlines, Senator. I'm sure you're familiar with that. Nobody wants to miss a deadline and incur the chance of not getting a grant, not getting the authority to do something that we are required either by federal or local law to do. That's not a reason for not compensating people. I'm just, I guess, demonstrating that it isn't black and white, it's a gray area. No matter how hard we try, we won't always be able to, I guess, come down on the right side or the wrong side of the line. And in response to a comment earlier, before I got to the department, and one of the employees of DOA was asked to work overtime, and that wasn't reported. And by that time, I'd arrived at the department, it was reported to the U.S. Department of Labor, it was investigated, and because the employee did in fact work those hours, we did pay the employee plus whatever penalties we had to pay to the U.S. Department of Labor. So it's not like these things don't get corrected. The mechanisms that Mr. Koss referred to may not always correct them very promptly or very thoroughly, but there are mechanisms there. And speaking for myself, I'm sure most agency directors comply with the law, whether there's a penalty or not, because that's what we have undertaken to do. And that's certainly the case at DOA, as far as we're humanly possible to do.
Well, I mean, aren't there procedures in place with regards to overtime requests? I mean, in departments I've worked at, normally it's the head of the department that would authorize overtime requests. Again, there should be a paper trail. If you're formally appointing someone to a position, there should be a paper trail. I mean, it's the department director ultimately that's approving the, you know, the payroll. So what is missing there?
I agree. Well, this happened before I got to DOA, it happened some years ago, but from what I understood at the time, is that the supervisor simply said, you know, do this job, work whatever hours that this job takes, but don't report it on your timesheet. And that obviously was an inappropriate, illegal thing to do, and it was dealt with through the legal system.
Well, that's unfortunate, because who's paying for that? Who's paying for that mistake? Mr. Koss, you seem to want to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. I just want to let you know, it might be unfair to put Mr. Burns and DOA under the hot seat here, when the agency heads are not making the formal request. These employees are being detailed by memorandum only, which is the first step. They begin their work at 30 days, that's when a request for personal action should be submitted to BBMR and approved by DOA. It is a common fact pattern in these cases that the requests for personal actions are not being requested, and the DOA may have no knowledge that an employee has been detailed and is due this differential pay. So, you know, with that, I know that Mr. Burns is trying to his best to field your answers, but I think the answer is, they're not aware. They don't know that this is going on. And as far as agency heads trying to comply with the law, I'm not so sure. You asked about overtime? Yeah, overtime's being paid, but now, a new problem has arisen where you're getting under-the-table CTO. It's not being reported, it's not reflected on their paycheck, it's kept in a drawer. You might get it, you might not. So the overtime problem still exists as well, but that wasn't what, it was in my bill, but it's out there. It's just being done differently.
Well, department directors, I'm sorry, department directors all have bosses, they all have regular cabinet meetings, they're not disengaged. I mean, you did endorse this current administration, so, you know, surprising to hear that these problems are still existing, how ironic.
And I have all Republicans.
Yes, I don't know where all the Democrats are. But it does bring to light, that does bring to light, obviously, that there's a need for consistency with regards to how it's administered, which falls to me directly on the shoulders of the head of the department, because they're the ones that are ultimately responsible. If they're assigning an employee to perform this task, then they should be addressing the, it's not that complicated. I mean, you address payroll every two weeks.
Every senator that has spoke has been right on, spot on. Everybody who spoke about the issue, I'm very pleased, it's what I'm hearing. I think you all fully understand the issues before you. Mr. Burns, I think, again, may not be fully aware of the magnitude of the problem.
No, and I don't expect him to run every agency, but I mean, the directors that are there should be responsible. Maybe DOE needs to reenlighten the directors with regards to what the processes and procedures are. And outside of that, if they're not performing it, then by all means, they should be held accountable for it.
Thank you.
It's not that complicated. I mean, you know, it's, all right. With that, thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment and ask.
Okay, I'll call on Senator Ty DeGruy, and then Senator Blas, you'll be last.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question, Mr. Burns. Have you received any information from the Guam Civil Service Commission on, you know, the practices that have been going on like this? Any recommendations that they provided you to not move in this area, that it's causing issues and could cause potential, you know, not conflict, but ramifications, you know, in spending? Have they brought this to your attention?
No, Senator, not me personally, but I'd certainly be happy for Shane to respond to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. We do converse with the Commission staff, especially with cases. If they do conduct an investigation, of course, we, you know, help comply and help and cooperate. But, yeah, on a policy level, I mean, I think both our agencies recognize that, like Mr. Koss said, there may be a gap in process somewhere or statutory authority to help all agencies come to an end result for the employees. You know, like Director Burns said, we operate within our guidelines that we have, and it doesn't always come out to the result that is needed to rectify these issues. So it might take a longer conversation, I think, to try and figure it out.
So civil service has brought this to your attention on the issue and are making recommendations on how to cover that gap that you just talked about?
Not formal recommendations, more so, you know, talking about the issues and, you know, how the rules apply and the laws apply. I think it requires a longer sitting down to come up with a formal recommendation on what.
Okay, that sounds like something that needs to be discussed, you know, and see whatever those gaps are, so that we can, you know, plug those up and make sure everybody's on fair and equal grounds here. So, thank you. That's all. I just had that simple question.
Thank you. Senator Blas, do you have any comments or questions? And then we'll follow up with a closing by Senator Duñez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the panel for being here. And Mr. Koss, you know, nice observation. Nobody up here got endorsed by you guys. Anyway, so, but, you know, you know, Mr. Burns, and, you know, I agree with Mr. Koss here that you're probably put in the hot seat here, and unfortunately, you are the bearer of having to make the decisions or, you know, the paperwork. of having to make the decisions or, you know, the paperwork's supposed to come to you, and it hasn't. But that said, it's maybe, you know, because you are the representation of the government in this panel. Wouldn't it be sufficient to say that in the case of detailed pay or detailed assignments and stuff, that there's a review of the budget and whether or not there exists within an agency's budget the ability to be able to pay the detailed pay if necessary?
Yes, thank you, Senator. Yes, I'm well aware that my seat has varying degrees of warmth, and sometimes it gets uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, it's the department's responsibility to budget. It's a budget, though. That was the point. It's a budget and can't necessarily contemplate every circumstance that might happen. It happens, unfortunately, that several government employees, because of long-term sickness for which, you know, one only has to feel sorry that they are suffering from this particular disease, are absent from their positions for extended periods. And sometimes those positions are key positions within the agency, and the work can't stop. The work has to go on. You can't really, I think, be too critical of agency directors for budget anxiety. Certainly, you know, if you're on the fiscal team, you take these things with a little bit more, I guess, understanding because you're dealing in the fiscal field, but not every agency director purports to be an agent, a budget expert. And some agencies don't have the appropriate personnel to deal with the budget, they don't have fully trained ASOs. Nevertheless, right, you know, in formatting that budget, what might have been submitted in the executive budget to have included sufficient funding to cope with this additional compensation that would be earned while the superior employee is sick and the junior employee is doing that job and therefore being compensated for it, it may or may not be there or perceived to be there. We will certainly help, and BBMR will certainly help that agency when we're approached, like Mr. Koss says, you know, we're not all seeing, but we want, you know, when we're approached, we will certainly help, and both on the HR side and on the fiscal side. But it's not always fully foreseeable, and there are circumstances where some departments certainly, you know, have exceeded their budget because of unforeseen circumstances like people retiring and getting lump sum payments or people, unfortunately, being sick and being sick for long periods requiring the necessity for detailing employees. Thank you to those employees for stepping up to the job. I certainly would want to lose no opportunity to thank them for doing that job on behalf of the government. But, you know, as far as Mr. Koss indicated, DOA will try and deal with whatever situation is presented and try and correct or help the agency. We encourage every agency to tell us what they're doing with personnel because we feel responsible for those personnel. The HR department takes its responsibilities very seriously.
No, I appreciate it. That's why, you know, between you and Shane, you are the receivers of the mess that had already been created. But thank you for, you know, for your presentation there because I'm listening to, you know, I run a business myself, and, you know, your basic business practices, one of the things that you've got to worry about is you've got to worry about your contingencies. You've got to worry about the what-ifs. Okay? But there seems to have been, over the last couple of years, just blatant, nonchalantly move people around and we'll figure it out later. Okay? Again, I don't, Mr. Burn, intend, you know, to come down on you because it's not, you know, you're not the one doing it. You're not the, you know, you're not the chief or the director of the other agency that constantly, that is doing this. But that said, is I sit here and I listen to the conversation and the presentation and the justifications in some cases of why this occurs. There's really no justification, and there's no reason why an individual who is being tasked to perform above step, you know, above their pay grade, above where their position title, and not expect, you know, compensation for that. That's, you know, I mean, that's common human decency. And, you know, I would just hope that, and I have to agree with Mr. Koss, I mean, while you may say that there are agencies that, you know, we have to, they're bound by the law and whether or not there are consequences or penalties or not, it doesn't seem to be that case, especially over the last few years. Okay? You know, I can recall many conversations I've had with government employees who have been tasked from one agency to another, more specifically for pandemic response. Thank you for having them having the expertise and being able to move, you know, to take on those tasks. There comes a point in time when, you know, the individual's got to be compensated justly for what they're doing. And to be, it's almost as the employee was taken, it was taken for granted that the employee's going to continue to do this because they're going to get, you know, they're going to get a paycheck. It's not about the paycheck. Okay? And again, Mr. Burn, there's no ill intent, I mean, I don't mean to direct this toward you personally or professionally. I know what you're trying to do at DOA, and I know that a lot of times you get, you're the bearer of this information in the back end, and sometimes it's not good. All right? And you try to fix it. Okay? He just happened to throw you to the wolves today, and I happen to be one of those wolves. Okay? But that said, you know, I appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the openness in this, okay? And thank you, Mr. Koss, for bringing this up. Yes, I was one of those senators the day you had this conversation with. So thank you. You had something to say?
Yeah, it sounds like we're wrapping up. I wanted to make a closing remark. I just want to remind the commission that the, or, I mean, sorry, the Guam Legislature, that the function of the detailed assignments is really to allow the department time to implement the merit system and fill positions by competition, a process of announcing, receiving applications, holding interviews, and then filling the position. And that's where the detailed assignments really come in handy. Up to 180 days with the consent of the commission, I'm sure the commission would grant any agency the extra time if they needed it for the purpose of filling positions by merit system protection. But the consequences of doing it the way it's being done, besides the obvious loss of public employee trust in their government and their employer, and public trust, whoever they talk to about this, is the incentive for employees to perform well. Employees, we have called work by the rule, where you do just enough to get a paycheck. And then we have other employees who go above and beyond, work weekends and above their hours, and their incentives are the, what, merit bonus and promotion. You took away, well, you didn't take away, but they're not getting merit bonus and promotion is they're still hopeful. But when we're filling positions by detailed assignment and not promoting employees, you take away that. So you take away the incentive for public employees to want to perform. There's nothing else out there for them. I might as well just do the minimum and get my paycheck. Why am I working so hard for no reason? So, okay, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koss. I'd like to invite Senator Duennas, if you have any closing remarks.
Just real quickly, Madam Chair, Shane might remember this. This is not unprecedented. Back in 2003, when the new public auditor came in, quarterly reports were required by directors, both hard copy and electronically, to be submitted, and failure of that was 10% docked from their pay. I know because I was director of youth affairs at the time. Fortunately, I didn't lose any pay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm glad you didn't lose any pay, Senator Duennas. You did a good job. With that being said, thank you to all who came to testify today on Bill Number 331-36ls. Bill Number 331-36ls is duly heard, and we will now move on to the next item on our agenda. I want to thank the panel members for your testimony and for the senators present today for your comments with regard. So the next bill that we're going to hear is Bill Number 347. Bill Number 347-36ls was introduced by the Committee on Rules by the request of Imaga Hagan Guahan, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. And we'll recess for just a minute while we gather up our documents. Good morning, everybody. We're going to proceed now with our next item on our agenda, which is Bill Number 347-36ls, which was introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hagan Guahan, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. This is an act to approve the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Plan and its supporting documents. I invite the commissioners and the executive director of the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority to have a seat at the table. Welcome, Ms. Leon Guerrero. When you're ready, I'll allow you, the chair, Maria Eugenia Leon Guerrero, and I believe Director Lacya Casil is on Zoom participating with us, so she'll be admitted into the conversation as well to make any statements. And I'll now allow you to begin with your opening statement, Ms. Leon Guerrero, and you may begin, please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you. Good morning, senators. My name is Maria Eugenia Leon Guerrero, and I am the chair for the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. Half a day, Honorable Senator Camacho Torres, senators, colleagues, friends, and stakeholders. It is my honor and privilege today to provide testimony in support of Bill Number 347-36, an act to approve the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Plan and its supporting documents. I am joined today in support by my fellow HRA commissioners, some of who could not be here with us physically, but I will acknowledge them. My vice chair, Patricia Ada from Ada's Trust and Investment, Elizabeth Gale, civil engineer with Setiadi Architects, Dr. Carlos Madrid, Macrenesia Area Research Institute, who is with us today, Tenrita Francis, Hagatna resident, and Saina of our board, Ms. Christine Wolk, managing partner at RIM Architects, who is also here with us today, Commissioner Felix Beneventi, independent consultant, former chief planner for land management and public works, Mr. Wes Cassidy from Cassidy's Associated Insurers, and John Cruz, our Hagatna mayor. Also with us earlier, but they had to leave to a meeting, was Celeste Werner, who is chief of strategic development with Matrix Design Group and has been HRA's main point of contact for the work done with the Hagatna Master Plan. As we all know, Hagatna has served as a center of government, culture, and commerce for Guam and the Marianas throughout many parts of its history, dating back to pre-Western contact through the Spanish colonial era and up through World War II. The vision for the restoration of our capital city was born in the hearts of community leaders who lived through the destruction of the war. There was a consensus among these leaders that our vibrant capital city must be restored to its former glory. The community leaders were humble, yet worldly men. No doubt, they had traveled the great cities of the world and understood the value that a well-planned, well-coronated, and well-governed city can bring to the people and businesses that reside within it, as well as the wider economy that it is a part of. They understood the critical role that a capital city plays in the cultural identity of a people. These were the beliefs that united our post-war community leaders and led to the creation of the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority. To my understanding, the first formal attempt to develop the Hagatna Master Plan was in 2005, though it was never completed. In 2014, an effort was initiated to update the 2005 Master Plan. The update was near completion, but for whatever reason, the plan was not ushered through the formal approval process. In 2019, the current HRA Board of Commissioners was impaneled, and we began the work of picking up where the former board left off. With new leadership in all of the government of Guam agencies, much of our work involved understanding and socializing the elements of the master plan with key stakeholders. Though it proved to be a significant investment of time and effort, our Board of Commissioners understood and appreciated that without strong buy-in and support from key stakeholders, this effort would not be successful. The master plan is a broad community vision and is meant to guide decision-making related to land use, roads, housing utilities, and other community needs in order to achieve its vision. It is a living document designed to adapt and flex as conditions and priorities change. Once the Hagatna Master Plan is approved, it will open doors for eligibility for numerous federal programs and funding sources targeted specifically for community development. We appeared before this legislature back in April of this year, 2022, advocating for the approval of the Hagatna Master Plan. Since that time, we have actively solicited your comments, questions, and concerns. For all those received, we believe that we have addressed them appropriately within the documents. The HRA has been criticized as a nonessential government agency, an expendable luxury that can be easily eliminated when faced with more pressing priorities such as education and public safety. Respectfully, we disagree with this position, particularly during a time when our community is struggling to make ends meet. We cannot afford to be short-sighted in our leadership. Certainly, we must address the needs of today, but we must also invest in opportunities that ensure the long-term sustainability of our economy. The HRA's enabling legislation requires us to develop a Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Plan, which is what we are redelivering to you today. The Hagatna Master Planning effort was started during the Camacho administration. It was substantially advanced during the Calvo administration, and with your help, we can carry this milestone over the finish line during the Leon Guerrero administration. What an opportunity for Guam to come together What an opportunity for Guam to come together in support of a vision that has involved the input and collaboration of three gubernatorial administrations and across party lines. Our post-war community leaders knew in their hearts that restoring our capital city was the right thing to do for our government, for our culture, and for our economy. Nearly 78 years after our liberation, our position remains unchanged. The vision and the intent is the same. The Master Plan has been developed, vetted, and supported. It is our community's Master Plan, to refine and evolve as we deem necessary. The time to act is now. I hope that you'll join me and my fellow Commissioners in supporting the passage of the Hagatna Master Plan. We are excited to put the plan into motion and set our capital city on a path to realizing its unlimited potential as a center of government, culture, and commerce on our island. Sidus Massey.
Thank you, Ms. Leon Guerrero. I understand your director is on by Zoom. Is she going to make a presentation? Are you aware?
Half a day.
Oh, there.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Lacya. Welcome.
Hi.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Senator Camacho Torres. Half a day, and thank you, Sidus Massey, Honorable Senators of the 36 Guam Legislature, for allowing us to be present and speak in support of Bill 347-36 and the approval of the Hagatna Master Plan and its supporting documents. The mission of the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority is to develop a plan that will promote, preserve, and protect the rich Chamorah heritage of our capital city of Hagatna, to develop affordable housing for our residents to return back, and to develop economic opportunities for our people to thrive. In short, create a city to live, work, and play. Hagatna was once the center of Chamorah culture, dating back 35 to almost 4,000 years. It is the oldest city in Oceania, was once the center of our government, as well as the center of Micronesia. It is the cultural destination of Guam and should be protected, promoted, preserved, and developed accordingly. As you are aware, the city was completely destroyed during World War II with all of the residents fleeing, all of our historic buildings destroyed, and very little restoration and reconstruction over the past 77 years. The few restoration and redevelopment projects include the Guam Museum, the restoration and the restoration of the Guam Congress Building. In the mid-1990s, a group of community leaders came together to form an organization to take the lead on the restoration of our beloved capital city. And Public Law 24-110 created the Hagatna Restoration, excuse me, and Redevelopment Authority. These community leaders knew that without a plan to develop the city and protect its heritage and our Chamorah culture and identity, that development would be hodgepodge, and much of the cultural and historical sites may be lost. The first attempt to create this plan was in the mid-2000s, 2006. It failed to launch, and again in 2014, 2015, almost $1 million was invested to build upon that plan. Development of the plan began with community engagement and charrettes. An entire chapter of the land use plan is dedicated to the recording of all of this community engagement. And for anyone to claim that there has been a lack of community engagement is false and misleading. From those initial meetings, the map atlas was created outlining the baseline from which we should move forward. The land use plan contains the goals and policies which will guide future land use and development decisions within Hagatna. It also identifies actions that will be used to accomplish these goals and policies. The design guideline document was created to develop the unique sense of place for our capital city. It is these three documents that we are asking for you to approve. When I was appointed to the position of Executive Director in January 2019, I walked into a room in which $1 million worth of work had just been tossed, disorganized into filing cabinets on top of tables. It was just everywhere. There were no minutes, no recordings of any of the board meetings held prior in the previous administration. OPA has no records from HRA prior to 2019. I consulted with the Governor, and she instructed me to work with the newly impaneled Board of Commissioners to reach out to all the agencies and stakeholders to re-review the materials and make sure we had all the supporting documents to move forward. I have to say that this board and its ex officio members represents the people in our community. It is comprised of local business owners in Hagatna, residents of Hagatna, local architects, engineers, planners, and historians that are entrenched in our community. It took us less than a year to resolve all the issues, so I take great pride in the dedication and to transparency and outreach that my board has done in such a short time. We reached out to the Senators for their input on this plan and received questions from the Speaker, Vice Speaker, and Senator Telo Titegwe. Thank you so much for your support. And I believe that we have responded in depth to all their questions and concerns, many of which were mostly about the capital improvement projects, which we are not asking for approval or for financial support today. I know there are concerns about the authority's power of eminent domain and our ability to change the zoning code with just a public hearing. As an autonomous government agency, it is not within our power to change the existing laws. If these are legitimate concerns, I recommend introducing legislation to change our enabling law. But holding the completed Hagatna Master Plan at bay because of something that we cannot control is not fair to the people of Guam. Another issue that has been brought up is the river feasibility study, which is required if we are to develop along the river. Concluding this study is not a prerequisite to current development. As one can see from the Guam Museum, the Guam Congress Building, First Community Bank, which is being constructed, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, which was done within the past five years. They are all being built to the current building codes. I know that during the budget session, there were concerns about our ability to handle funds brought up. And I just wanted to clarify why GITA was overseeing the contract to develop the Hagatna Master Plan, as it was the hot bond which GITA administers. And so that's why they were overseeing that project. In revising the current plan, I went through all the recordings of the public hearings with the legislature, took note of all the recommendations, all the issues brought up, and incorporated them into this revised plan. We did hold a markup session. Thank you, Senator Telo, for attending that session. We did include your comments, edits, and revisions. I am proud of this piece of work, and I think it truly serves the people of Guam. We cannot move forward without a plan, and no plan is perfect as circumstances and conditions are constantly changing. But this plan is a living document, which is required to be updated consistently with changing circumstances and conditions. Therefore, we ask that you humbly please approve the Hagatna Plan without further delay. I welcome your questions and comments. Sidus Massey.
Sidus Massey, Ms. Casil. I'm going to open the discussion up now to the panel of Senators, and I will invite Senator Blas, if you'd like, have any questions for...
Thank you, Madam Chair. But, you know, Madam Chair, I'm a little discerned here. It's the only bill. It's probably the only time we've only ever had a public hearing, and we don't have any paperwork. You know, and you're talking about a 300-page document. And I appreciate, ma'am, Ms. Leon Guerrero, your presentation, as well as Ms. Casil. But I'm looking for paperwork to see, to discern, so that I can... And I really like some of the comments that both you and Ms. Casil had stated. Fortunately, it was a little hard to hear from her side. And I'd like to be able to reserve some of my comments until I can get some... Do you have... Is that going to be submitted as your testimony?
Yes, if I can interject, Senator Blas. There is attached to Bill 347-36 LS, and I apologize if you don't have a copy in front of you. The staff can bring one to you. This bill, an act to approve the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Plan, includes supporting documents. And there is basically three different documents that constitute the final plan, which is seeking approval through this bill. The first is the Hagatna Master Plan. The second is the Hagatna Master Plan Design Guidelines. And the third is the Hagatna Master Plan Map Atlas. So I just want to note that to you, and I apologize that you don't have one in front of you, but we'll get that to you right away. And you may proceed, Senator Blas.
Then if that be the case, is it very safe to say, Ms. Leon Guerrero, that the bill is basically the exact bill that was submitted to the legislature previously?
There were some minor revisions based on some of the questions and comments that we received from the legislature back at that hearing in April.
Okay. And that's why, I mean, first off, I appreciate that. And if there were, I don't have a copy of it. And I was told I can get it online. It's just, I would like to be able to defer some of my questions and comments until I get some of that information, okay? But thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Senator Frank. Senator Brown?
I think it would be helpful, because it is an extensive document, to provide us what those amendments or changes were. You know, I appreciate the interest, obviously. I mean, I was in the legislature when we originally authorized the creation of the Hagatna Foundation to begin this process of revitalizing our capital. And I think a lot of us would love to see it. It's just a question of the comfort level in moving forward. And I think that was discussed earlier this year in not moving forward with this plan. So it would be helpful to provide that. I mean, you know, the attacks and the criticism mixed in with the comments don't help the bill. You know, we're not unenlightened. I mean, I think we all want to see the improvement to our capital. I think we have much to gain, including, you know, enhancing the existing historical landmarks that are down here that probably need more work and more restoration. And I think we all would see the benefit of that, not just for, you know, as hopefully our tourism industry comes back to the island, but just our community, our children, that pretty much, you know, still have a lot to learn about our history. And I think we want to preserve that, and yet at the same time, still grow and expand. You know, even though I do enjoy the quietness here on the weekends when everybody is out of the capital. So it would be good and would be helpful because this document does not show me what changes were made to the original plan that was presented to the legislature, this current legislature. So if we did have an outline of that to reference, it would be helpful because I'm not going to be able to distinguish that looking at this existing document.
I believe that a matrix was prepared, showing exactly where the questions were and how we responded to them. Lacya, can you please confirm that that was submitted?
An outline with all of the exact edits was submitted to the legislature. So it's a matrix that shows the comments, the page, what the previous, what the old version was, and then what the new comment was. But we can email you another copy, Senator Brown.
Who were they given to?
It was submitted from the Governor's Office, I believe, to the...
It's not attached to this version.
Clerk. You know, it's submitted to the clerk, and I think copies were distributed from there. But we can send you a copy of that. I'll email one over to be distributed again.
Well, that would be helpful because I don't see it here. I don't think Senator Telo has a copy of it either. She attended the hearing, so I don't know where the disconnect was. But I think, once we've had an opportunity to review that, I'd be more in a position to ask questions or respond. So, Madam Chair, I really have nothing more to add at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will confirm with the committee the receipt of that and make sure that it is provided as part of the documents, including all testimonies submitted as part of this bill, for the record, for the reference of Senators to in ample time. I'd now like to acknowledge Senator Titegwe, if you have any comments or questions.
Yes, thank you very much. And I did attend the meeting and put some comments through that I think that the most important one that I mentioned was having a roundtable. You know, having everyone come together, discuss, you know, not just the legislature, but agencies, as well as the community or businesses in Hagatna. But that didn't happen. And I was very disappointed that we're here today looking at this measure and not having that roundtable. And you know, Madam Chair, I did speak to you personally how important that would be, you know, moving forward and just providing more transparency, not just to the legislature, but to the community as well. I did research some of the bill compared to Bill 246 that was introduced and failed on the floor. And now, in its place at 347, there has been some changes. It approves the Master Plan, the Hagatna Master Plan Design Guidelines, and the Hagatna Master Plan Map Atlas. So it just takes in three of the four considerations of the last bill instead of all four or five. Bill 347, the sections require a five-year review of the plan. There's so much more that my colleagues need to review on. I believe one of the board members lifted up and kind of showed us what that document looked like, and I don't have that. But once we have that, we can have more discussions on it. But can you please, Madam Chair, if you can, explain the one section that requires the five-year review of the plan? That's a bit different compared to the bill that failed on the floor, on the Hagatna Master Plan, and then the section now requires a five-year. Can you...
Sure. I can address that, and then I can go back to your other comment about the roundtables and the public input because there was a significant amount.
Okay, thank you.
For the issue that you're talking about, Speaker Terlahe had submitted a concern that there is a part of the plan that says the HRA shall reevaluate the plan every five years or sooner. And her concern was what the cost would be moving forward should there be any edits or revisions to the plan. And she had requested, can we add in the introduction somewhere, something to the effect that HRA is the owner of the document and has the authority to make any changes or revisions? And we did insert that HRA is the owner of the Hagatna Master Plan, Land Use Plan, and has the authority by law to make updates to the plan as appropriate. And it has always been in the plan that we would revisit it every five years or sooner if, you know, conditions change or the situation warrants.
Okay, so that's what the five years is? Because I was looking through that real quickly and added in. Okay, I'm not going to belabor this any longer. I think we... Oh, no, you were going to discuss about the roundtable.
Yeah.
From the time that I met with you, with my defunto rollo, Vilaverdi, and I attended your meeting, how many roundtables have you had since that time?
None since that time. But I want to just state that the Hagatna Master Plan has been a community effort from the beginning. So there are several roundtable stakeholder interviews that were conducted in October 2014, February 2015. We had public charrettes, press releases, interviews, open-house public workshops. All of this happened during the Calvo administration when the plan was substantially developed. And that included Senators, agencies, local businesses, local residents. All of that is documented in the plan. There's a section there that actually lists everyone who was interviewed for that. So it was a huge undertaking. Of course, we paid Matrix to do that, so they did that. When we became impaneled in 2019, our subcommittee spent an entire year during COVID going around to all of the agencies and soliciting input from them, making sure that... making sure that, because they were all new leaders in those agencies. So we spent a lot of time meeting with each of the agency heads, making sure that they'd read the plan, if they had any concerns, if they had any feedback for us, which we incorporated. We put a lot of hours into that as a subcommittee. So the roundtables that you're talking about, I feel they've been happening all along. We haven't had any between the last hearing and this one. But as far as the current legislature, I know that we have provided the documents. I realize they're lengthy, but we have done that. I know Lacy has reached out to many of you asking if you have any questions or concerns. So I do feel that we have given that opportunity and done so adequately.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And there is no means, sorry, there is no means that I'm here, you know, not claiming that you've had other roundtables. I mean, it's obvious, the work that you've been doing. I've been staying on top of this and looking at the research that you've also provided. But the whole purpose of a roundtable now is, like you said, there are different leaders. You know, there is different makeup in the legislature. During session, when we heard the first original bill, 246, and the concerns that were brought up on the floor, you know, they needed to be addressed. That's why it was so important when I came to see you that one of the first things I said was, we need a roundtable. It's fine, there've been roundtables as we've been going for the last decade on this particular project. But I'm talking about now because we had a public hearing, we had this bill on session, and there were great concerns that wanted to be addressed. And nothing, you know, there was no roundtable from that time until now. Okay, Lacy, is that you speaking? I think it is.
Hi, yes, may I respond to your question?
Sure, sure, Lacy. But let me just finish, let me just finish, okay? One of the concerns was eminent domain, the taking of land, that this board had a power. This board has the power just to take land. You know, that was a huge, huge concern. And there was another issue on the boardwalk, you know, the, you know, moving forward on something like that. I mean, the Army Corps of Engineers, you know. All these things were not really addressed. And this particular bill still does not address some of them. I really, at this point, Lacy, I'll let you go next, but we need to have a roundtable. I've asked you guys to have that. And I think my colleagues here would like to hear that too as well. And we've got a whole group of, you know, new senators coming in into the 37th. And I'm pretty sure they're going to want to get updated on this. So other than that, can I go ahead and let Lacy comment? Okay, and then you can comment after. Go ahead, Lacy.
Thank you, Senator. We did respond directly to your request for a roundtable. I believe it was a memo sent. I don't have it in front of me, I do apologize. But we were advised by our legal counsel that because the legislature rejected the bill and we would have to, you know, we would have to introduce a new bill, that what was appropriate at the time was a markup session. So we were following legal counsel. And then, once the new bill is introduced, then we could have a roundtable. So that is why we did not have the roundtable. And I did send you a memo after your request, responding exactly that. I think that it was outlining what the legal coverage was.
Legal cannot tell this legislature not to have a roundtable, number one, you know. So that doesn't make any sense. So, but I'm curious to see what your legal has to say and send it our way. Madam Chair, please.
Okay, I just, I understand the concerns that were raised in the previous hearing about the eminent domain, about some other powers that the HRA was granted in our enabling legislation that maybe this body was not comfortable with, okay? But I feel that that is a separate issue from this. If you senators aren't comfortable with that, then why don't you propose a bill to amend the original legislation? I don't think it's fair to hold this master plan hostage because you're not happy with something that was passed many legislatures ago. That can be amended, that's up to you. But this plan, it stands regardless of those authorities or not. And I think it would be a mistake to hold this hostage. We can open doors to funding and get things going because ultimately, as both of you stated, we all want this for our community. So why do we now have to hold this hostage because of that, you know, the original law? It doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, and I agree. But I don't think that we should move forward. If there is a mistake in a prior legislation or a law that's currently in place that needs to be addressed, I think we need to start cleaning up from back then. And it just makes us uncomfortable moving forward if there's things that need to be cleaned up, you know, prior to this bill being introduced. But it doesn't mean that it's dead in the water. Are you asking something? Did you want to make a comment or? Okay, well, you know, I'm almost done. So I appreciate, again, what you've done to move forward. And again, I request that a roundtable. I guess it's a morning of roundtables. You know, even on my bill that was introduced earlier, I'm requesting for a roundtable before that bill moves forward. So I think we just need to be a little bit more informed and the public as well, if we can have that roundtable for the public to view. So other than that, I greatly appreciate all your hard work. I mean, if there is one board that has been diligently working to try and move something forward, it's been your board. But it's about being more transparent, you know, both to us and the public. And then, thank you so much.
Thank you, senators.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero. I'm quite impressed with the fact that we've been at this since 2005, that this idea of Hagatna redevelopment was born in 2005 under one administration, the Comandilla Administration. It was brought to fruition in terms of a plan, an actual tangible plan that was presented to the community by the Calvo Administration in 2014, and then now resurrected again in 2019 under the Leon Guerrero Administration. I appreciate that you indicated that there is, in fact, a matrix that addresses what essentially is a redline version of the first master plan versus this introduction, this iteration that is presented to us in this bill format. Christine, you were holding up a document which may or may not have been submitted to the committee. And I'm not certain that it was because, as the vice chair, I didn't receive it. The chair might have received it. But do you have, did you have any comments or questions just to clarify the iteration of this bill versus the last or progress is made? Just to give us some assurances about the version that was submitted to the Committee on Rules?
No, when you're asking us to be transparent, I think it's, would, okay. I'm sorry, Christine Walk. I'm with RIM Architects. I'm a commissioner on the board for HRA. When you're asking us to be transparent, I was just pointing out to Maria here that I have email copies that you have all received these documents. I'm sorry if you don't have them in front of you. But we've done our part. And maybe there's something happening in your offices where you're not getting these. But it would be really nice if everybody came to the meeting prepared. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I want to invite you, Ms. Leon Guerrero, if you have any closing statements. You'll be the last to speak on this matter today, at this public hearing. But if you had anything to add, you're welcome to add any closing statements now.
Just, I guess, just to reiterate the fact that this has been a longstanding effort. Many people have worked on it. I believe it was transparent. I believe it involved everyone that needed to be involved. I understand the concerns. But again, I don't think that should preclude us from passing this master plan and getting started on this and seeing some of the fruits of all the labor that has been put in over decades at this point. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, just a little bit, Ms. Chair. And I appreciate the concern and the request from Ms. Leon Guerrero. But, you know, as a member of this body that's hearing this, I think that they're given the opportunity to be able to foresee what was submitted and then be able to ask the questions there. That was the whole purpose of this public hearing before we can even bring it before the body on the floor. So I would like that, you know, for it to be officially noted in this public hearing committee that the senators attending the hearing, we didn't have that information. And that information is necessary for us to be able, I think it's necessary for us to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to note for the record that the information has been submitted and was provided, as noted by the commission. So that is a fact. It was submitted into the record. Access to it is a different issue. But I just want to say that I commend you for you and your committee and Hagatna Restoration Redevelopment Authority for all the work that you've done. I know, going back as a daughter of Guam, a lot of my memory and the legacies that are passed down from my parents have been stories about Hagatna, where they lived, where they went to school, how they lived, the commerce that was involved here, everything from the pre-war to the World War II experience to the post-World War II experience. And a lot of the fabric of that generation is born in their livelihoods in Hagatna, notwithstanding, you know, their ranches on the outskirts of Agania. But Hagatna was the identity and the true bosom of Guam for at least my parents' generation and their parents' generations. So I commend you for the vision and for the perseverance. It's been 17 long years. And oftentimes, these things are not done overnight. They require a lot of effort, a lot of two steps back, three steps forward. But, Ms. Leon Guerrero, thank you. And Lacy Casil, thank you for presenting today. It is very hard to grasp the idea of a redevelopment plan for a capital. But I think if we can appreciate the genesis of why this plan was born, I think that whole genesis can help bring us to the finish line and to a consensus amongst the community and lawmakers about how we are going to arrive at that place, which I think is a vital place. Because I certainly hope that what was Guam in the eyes of the people that raised me can become the Guam of the generations after me. And perhaps I'll live long enough to see a lot of the fruition of this good effort. So I just wanted to leave it on that positive note. A journey is never always an easy journey, and it's never always straightforward. But it is a journey nonetheless that we have to take as a people if it's truly something that we want to do to not only rebuild a critical infrastructure, but regain what is historically significant to so many in our community. And I speak from the heart in this point. I'm not necessarily advocating one way or another. But I do believe that the vision is a sound vision. The redevelopment and restoration is a sound principle, just from what I know as a daughter of Guam, as a Chamora woman. And so I thank you today. And with that being said, I hereby state that Bill Number 347-36 is duly heard. And we will now proceed with the fourth item for today's agenda shortly. And so I'd like to dismiss you, Ms. Leon Guerrero, and thank you for being here today and all of those that came in support of this bill. And Ms. Casil, Sisus Massey, for joining us via Zoom. Our next item is going to be Bill Number 354-36COR. And I'll just take a moment's recess to gather the documents.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, I'll recognize you in a second. Yes, thank you. So the next item on our agenda is Bill Number 354-36COR, introduced by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes. It is an act to add a new Section 80129 to Chapter 80, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the acquisition of library books, eBooks, audiobooks, digital publications, newsletters, software, and any other publications deemed necessary by the Guam Public Library System. The sponsor of the bill, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, was unable to join us today. But on behalf of the sponsor, I will read a brief statement on Bill Number 354-36 on her behalf. "In working with the Director of Library, Mr. Chris Serengen, Bill Number 354-36 was drafted simply to give the library greater flexibility to determine the tools and services needed to enhance our public library. Libraries play an important role in our community, providing safe access to information in addition to peer-reviewed papers and journals. It's important that our libraries stay up to date with the latest books, journals, and research databases. We author this bill to allow our libraries to continuously improve and adapt to changes in technology." And I will now open the floor to individuals who have signed up. We have quite a listing of individuals who have signed up to testify today. And actually, just a few who have signed up for oral testimony. So I'll begin with you, Mr. Chris. Please introduce yourself and begin. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Chris Serengen. I am the Director for Guam Public Library System. This morning, we have quite a few folks are here to give their oral testimony. And some of them have to go back to work. May I close my remarks at the closing remarks, during the closing remarks? At this time, we have here Mr. Francis Balaras, the librarian of John F. Kennedy High School. He would like, I would like him to give his oral testimony, if I may.
Okay, Mr. Francis, you may proceed. Please introduce yourself.
Hafaday Manana Sisus, Madam Chair, Senators. My name is Francis Balaras. I'm here to support Mr. Chris Serengen with his bill. I've known Mr. Serengen for many years. He was a co-teacher of mine back in 2005 at Southern High. And then he joined JFK's team back in 2007. And he's been our librarian there till he vacated and became the Guam Public Library Administrator. He was also my professor over at the University of Guam as I was going through my library science studies. And I've known him to be very passionate when it comes to the library. So when he took over back in 2007, he was able to transform John F. Kennedy's library from its, during that time, a sad situation to a 21st century library. Today it is, as it is. So if you come visit us at our school, you'll see that many of the things he's done are wonderful, innovative. And, you know, he's brought the library up to, I want to say, almost national standards, considering the constraints he had. And so now that he's at Guam Public Library, I know that he has a passion for the library. I know he has a passion for the people. He wants to bring a lot of innovative programs to the library. I've seen it, many things that he's done so far in the short time he's been in the Guam Public Library system. So I know he's 100% for the library and the people. And so with this bill, I'd like to support him, to help him, you know, alleviate some of the things that would hold him back, especially when it comes to having grants and using up that money on time. I think that this would definitely help him in the process of upgrading the libraries here on Guam, reopening them, and then presenting them as 21st century libraries for our people. here on Guam, reopening them, and then presenting them as 21st century libraries for our people. And some of the programs he showed me were wonderful. I can't wait to see them implemented. And so I'd like to see or ask for the legislative help to ensure that his program is going forward. And with that said, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Mears, may I ask you to present your testimony now? Signed up for oral testimony, Marissa? Yes, hi, please introduce yourself.
Okay, Hafadeh, Madam Chair, and Senators. My name is Marissa Kontinida Mears, and I'm a GPLS Board Member. I am in full support for passage of Bill Number 354-36 relative to the acquisition of library books, digital publications, audiobooks, eBooks, software, and multimedia content. This passage, the passage of this bill will give greater flexibility to GPLS to determine and submit its list of books and related materials to the Board for approval and directly to GSA's centralized procurement program. This bill will enable GPLS to reduce the lengthy procurement process and to finally expedite the ability of Director Serengen and the staff to expand their collection of books, publications, and technological resources to its users and the community. Sisus Maasi.
Sisus Maasi. May I ask Ms. Gayer to begin?
Is it on? Yes. Honorable Senators, and I hope that this can also be heard by the twelve senators that are not present today. I've been a patron of the Navist Library for forty-eight years. And I have enjoyed the use of our public library many, many times. I've also put on puppet shows there and had displays of ancient relics and told stories to children at their hours. And I've spent so much time researching in that library and writing, and I can see a positive improvement since Director Chris Serengen has become Director there. I have noticed that we do need some more books of the new kind of books that we don't have at our library and that if it can be expedited to bring these in by giving the power to the people who work at the library and to the Director and the people on the Board there, it would make it easier for the other entities in our government to pass this responsibility on to them and would expedite the new books and videos and all the technologies that might become available through the funding by the federal government or whatever kind of sources, including taking advantage of things that might be given to us that we're not getting unless they can make the decisions, because it's just so much paperwork going through all the other entities. So I strongly support Bill Number 354-36. And I ask you to please pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gayer. And yes, this is not only livestreamed, but it's also on YouTube, so everyone can have the opportunity to watch it at a later time, if not right now. Thank you. Mr. Rudolph?
Hafadeh. Yes, my name is Jan Rudolph. And I recently participated in the Story Hour program implemented by Director Chris Serengen. And, you know, that was a very nice way to engage with the public and where parents brought in their kids and listened to the story. But I am also here to support the passing of Bill, this bill. I would like to see that the Guam Public, the Guam Library System is authorized to determine what materials and technology it needs for our public library. It needs to be able to access funds in a timely and efficient manner and not have to go through the lengthy procurement process. Our Director and Library Board can handle this responsibility. And we are in a new age where we have to acquire books and software when available. The library cannot wait for the time it would take to get all the approvals. Our youth need a strong public library with updated and current resources at their disposal. Passing this law would be a big step in the right direction. And so I hope that this bill gets passed and we can, you know, get more things for that library that we need, as that is a central part of our community and would be a great asset for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Ms. Story?
Hafadeh, good morning. My name is Monique Caravos Story, and I come before you as a career librarian, a member of the Guam Public Library Board, and a lifetime patron of the Guam Public Library System. I support Bill 354-36 because it gives the Guam Public Library System more control over their responsibility to create and maintain a collection that fits the need of our community. Theoretically, the bill helps to fill in some of the gaps in governmental operations when it comes to libraries. Libraries should be a curated collection of accurate information resources that are reflective of the community's needs and interests. And the responsibility of the selection of resources should reside within the library personnel. Bill 354-36 provides the library with more authority over library acquisitions so that the most appropriate material in its most appropriate formats may be selected for the library. Material selection outside of the library's purview runs the risk of acquiring an unusable resource, meaning lost dollars. Libraries should also maintain timely collections, meaning that the resources held in the library hold the most current information about the subjects they address. By identifying the public library and its board as the authorized selectors, I'm hopeful that Bill 354-36 streamlines the procurement process that the library must abide by. Practically, the bill makes sense. As a career librarian, I am all too aware of how government of Guam procurement legislation and processes create challenges for acquiring library resources. Over the decades, I have heard the frustration that school and public librarians have had overplacing requests and not knowing when or if or which of their requests were made for, made or were approved. As a Board Member of the Guam Public Library System, I've seen the frustration on the part of all of the library personnel in trying to get through the multiple hurdles of demonstrating need to purchase the books and databases and other resources, like even their library resource management system, and feeling a sense of no control over their situation. While tangential to this bill, I will point out that the current government of Guam procurement legislation and processes erode the delegated authority of the librarians and create unnecessary hurdles for all types of libraries, whether it be the public library, school, or academic libraries. This bill may only address the Guam Public Library System, but it also provides an entryway for other types of libraries to address their unique problems. Not having control over what is approved makes it difficult for the public library to carry out the two theoretical points that I brought up earlier. By not having this approval authority, the Guam Public Library faces a cascading challenge of how it builds its collection so that it maintains timely and formats that are available and useful to the public. It's cascading because each external decision that is made requires the library to reassess its plan of acquisitions so that the library's collection is balanced. In sum, I'm in support of this measure because the selection of library resources is a duty and a responsibility that should remain in the hands of the library personnel rather than under the control of an external system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Story. The last person who signed up to testify orally today is Ms. Ugon.
Thank you. Buenas noches, Senator Blas, Madam Chair Torres, and Senator Taitabie. Hafadeh, my name is Linda M. Ugon, Library Technician from the Guam Public Library System. I have been working for the Guam Public Library System for over thirty-six years already. My directive major task now is coming from GPLS Director is to catalog, classify, and process new book collections, with three other library technicians assisting, and one out of the three is being directed to process the audiobook collections and eBooks, which is still pending and no results yet. Under his supervision for one year at John F. Kennedy High School Library, I worked with the Director of GPLS. It was a short time, but I learned a lot other than just checking in and out books and printing copies for students' request. I am so thankful that GPLS have a director, who is Mr. Chris Serengen. I am confident that Mr. Serengen will provide library services to the community of Guam, but his hands are tied due to our procurement system. Lately, we haven't been receiving any large number of new books, except the books from the Library of Congress that the Director secured while he was in Washington, DC during the ALA Conference this year. And before he came to the library, we purchased books from local retail stores in the amount of $5,000, and we basically manage our collection by books being donated by our library patrons. When I'm assigned at the circulation desks or branch libraries, most of our library patrons would ask me, "When are we going to get new books?" I believe that for whatever reasons, the current procurement system is not helping us in ordering our resources, materials in a timely manner. So therefore, I am asking you all, our senators plus the twelve that are not here, to please support changing the system so that the Guam Public Library System will function as expected. I hope that in your hearts and minds, please consider in supporting Bill 354-36COR. Donkulanda Sisus Maasi, puti tempon mido, nion na ijo.
Sisus Maasi, Ms. Ugon. I find it interesting, Mr. Chris, that you have had such challenges in procuring material, timely material, relevant material, as needed and not, the need not determined by somebody else. In your estimate, though, do you see that this would pose any issues with procurement? Or how, the question is, how is it in other library systems where they're able to do a sole source, more or less, where they're able to determine that they need X number of books in this genre, for this age category, et cetera? How is that addressed in other library systems, as you're aware?
I'm going to say I termise some of the things that's happening in the library. I know that I'm not going away from that question that you had. The challenge is that getting processed books in, on a timely manner. At the moment, we are thankful that our governor was able to give us quite a bit of money. Close to, if I can, if I may, we have these years of one, we got $201,000. And the years of two, almost $2.3 million. And the TAB grant, which is for, just for e-platform, $130,536. And then Archive Digitation Project, it's about $499,991.50. And then ARP Fund, $448,180. And the, in the, our, the five-year grant, close to about $118,000 to $120,000, which we get every year from IMLS. And the last one, first time, we were very fortunate to receive a will that was written by one of our patrons, who passed away recently. That's about $200,000. This is a clear indication that donation, this community wants to support our library. They cannot, you know, the way that it's being managed in the past, first of all, you know, we didn't have a director for quite a long time. And because of that, we were not, you know, we couldn't keep up with the demand for these years. These are the years that a lot of technological development took place. eBooks, all kinds of things, which we were not able to take part. One reason is the funding. The second one is, you know, the professional contribution to the library. So other libraries now, you asked me how the other libraries are functioning. I was with DOE Libraries for about close to fifteen years. I was a librarian for John F. Kennedy High School. While I was there, I also was, was involved promoting and building the other school libraries. We were about forty-one libraries. Now, I would say the forty-one libraries is way ahead of our public, Guam Public Library System. We have five branches, and we have a main library. It's like, I can say, it's like you build a nice store, beautiful store, grocery store. It is conveniently located, that people who work, they are very well-trained. But when they go to the store and they will see all the items are outdated, and the people see that most of them are damaged, and that will be the best, you know, we are promoting, we are doing everything to get people over there, but that would be the last trip, one trip, they never come back. That is a classical example, the situation of our libraries here. We, all the libraries are located very conveniently in the villages. And our Agania Library, Hagatna Library, name is Floris Memory Library, is, it's awesomely located, you know, you sit, heart of Agatna, and you can see, you cannot miss it. But our people work very hard to maintain their place. However, the building the collection, keeping up to date, is the challenge right now. So my concern is that unless we change the system, we have more than, almost $3 million in grants, and if we do not do things to speed up the process, we may, I am afraid that we might lose all this grant money. So we might end up returning the money. So this is very crucial that we pass this bill so that we will be able to get this, make it, take advantage of this grant money. In history of the library, we never got this kind of money. I'm thankful that our governor was able to give us this kind of grant money, and we want to make use of every penny of it.
Thank you. So what, and I think you speak very specifically to the bill's intention, which is to give the, the library, the authority to determine what books and eBooks and audiobooks and digital productions and newsletter software, other publications are needed. And that, that basically is the cut to the chase that, in fact, Ms. Story talked about and many of you talked about as well, correct? It's, so it's just for you to determine what it is and to fast-track it through the GSA process, correct?
Yes. Yes. What is going to happen is that we will be the one to decide what we want, and then we take up that, whatever we decide to give it to the Board, the Board will be the ultimate decision-maker in this process. So once it's done, then we will submit to the, submit to GSA, and they will be the one to issue and check and balance, you know, all the making payment and things like that. So, you know, if I may say, this, like, $130,000 is going to be just for eBooks alone. You know, our- You know, our counterparts in the mainland, they are already making use of that. Our folks go to the mainland and see the libraries and come back, "Hey, what happened to the eBooks?" You know, we, we were, when we were there, we were able to download books, we were able to use it using our device, but we don't have anything. That's, that's what some of our library technicians shared a few minutes ago. And the next one is the, one is the four hundred and ninety-nine thousand. That is a very, very urgently needed process. And we are in a process of digitizing all our heritage materials, meaning the Guam-related materials. We all have it in hard copies, and we want to digitize those things. And so that we, and also now, when we digitize, we have to do the copyright law and all of these things. So, that is very crucial, that we need to get that going. We already done all our work in terms of the resources, in the equipment, and the consultant, and so forth. So, everything is set. But if you, if you depend on GSA, you know, GSA itself, they feel that it is time for you guys to be independent and get this done. They themselves, supporting this bill. If you look at some of their testimonies, they are, they are hundred percent supporting this bill so that we will be able to get this done.
Yes, thank you very much. Senator Taitabee, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel who's here to testify. It's always good to see other librarians from the public school system here to be here. So, appreciate your time. I won't be labor this, because I know some of you have to leave early, but, you know, what was the Guam, Mr. Director, what was the Guam Public Library doing to acquire books prior to this bill?
Thank you, Senator, for asking that question. I, as according to the record, there was one time they have purchased books from a company, private company, from the mainland. Other than that, what they usually do, they wait, as Linda Ogden said, they wait until sometime September, when they have leftover money, and take that money, and then they use the, I mean, of course, they get the purchase order, and go to one of our retail stores and buy those books from the shelf. And they have done that one. Other than that, there's no, right now, we have allocated more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for just only books, hard copy books, other than that hundred and thirty thousand dollars for eBooks. So, for many, many years, we were just, the libraries just basically surviving by the donation from the patrons. They donate, whenever they leave the island, they donate those books, and they catalog it, and they put them on the shelf. They don't, I don't think any, any of these, our folks will say, they have not received a large, like, like the way we are doing right now. It's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our ESF2 fund, and there was no purchase at all. If you, the eight, you know, we have five branch libraries and one main library. Eight thousand is not going to take anywhere, you know? And especially when you buy those books from shelves on a retail store, you're not going to get that much, that many books to put them on the shelf. You know, we have to divide it by six, you know, we have six libraries. So, historically, they have not done any kind of major purchases until this year. This year, we have, we wrote the grant. You know, to write the grant, you have to go through so much tedious works. And we have the money now, and this is going to be the first time, the history, that's as far as I remember. I may be wrong. As far as I remember, this is the first time that we are going to be spending this much money. But I, unless we pass the law, bill, this bill, we won't be able to, I am afraid that we may not be able to spend that money.
You received four hundred thousand, four hundred and forty thousand, what was the amount?
Okay, if you look at it.
And is this the ARP funding?
Yeah, if you look at it, that ESF2 funding, that's about two point three million dollars. That's include for renovating the library, buying shelves, and also in that, in that amount, in the total amount, we have set aside for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just for books.
Just for books.
Hard copy books.
Okay, your budget, in the FY twenty-three budget, I believe you received one point two million. Well, actually, it's one million, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and forty-nine for your budget, correct? Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, for FY twenty-three. And you're saying that you have an additional amount that was given to you? About two million, you said, or?
No, if you look at it altogether, about three million dollars.
You, on, on top of your budget, okay?
Top of my, our budget.
You received an additional three million, correct?
The budget for annual budget that we got from our general fund, eighty-five to ninety percent goes to payroll.
Okay.
And then five percent goes to utilities. So, we hardly had any money to purchase.
Right, I'm not, I'm not questioning your budget, I'm just questioning the additional funding that you received. Is this ARP funding, the two million that you received?
Okay, this is, has a different name, ESF1, that is the Education Stabilization Fund.
Okay, right, okay.
That's one. Then Education Stabilization Fund Two, that's about two point three million.
Two point three?
Yeah. And the eBook platform, it's still.
What, I see now, none of it is ARP funding, it's actually grant money, and?
Grant money, exactly.
Right, okay, so, I wanted to know, so what is the time period in which you have to expend this grant funding?
Well, some of them, like, I'm concerned about that hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the eBook. That's, I think, maybe a year, or? Yeah, two more years.
Two years?
Yes.
Is that for the, all the grants? I mean, it looks like you have three million dollars worth of?
Well, the first one, ESF1, we are, pretty much, we are done with that funding, because we hired five library technicians. We updated with our computers and a few other things.
You, feel free to come up if you want, you know, if you have all the numbers to simplify it for me. And just, just kind of tell me, of those three grants that were provided, I mean, what we're doing here is we're trying to bypass, you know, what's put in place currently right now to accommodate this additional funding that's been given to the library. So, I just want to see what is the timeframe and why we would have to, you know, what's the justification, really, to, you know, change the law right now? So, if you, if, if you state your name for the record, please, and then kind of explain to me those grants, and when they're due, you have to expend them by a certain time?
Okay, my name is June Afflecky, I'm the administrative officer for the library. So, the first one that he's talking about, the Education Stabilization Fund, that one, that grant has expired already.
So, you've, you expired it, and you were able to utilize the full amount? Okay, and that was for how much? I'm sorry?
Two hundred and one thousand.
Can you speak into the mic, I'm sorry?
Two hundred and one thousand.
Okay, and the next one?
Okay, so the ESF2, two point three million that he mentioned earlier, we haven't received funding for that yet.
When is it expiring?
There's about two more years on that, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and then the last one?
Then the last one, the DOI TAB grant expires in twenty twenty-three.
Next year?
Next year, yes.
What, what month?
September.
September, so you have a little less than a year to try and expend that, okay? Yeah, that's good information to know, you know, and trying to push. I understand the concerns that you have in trying to utilize this money right away. The last question I have would be, you mentioned a digitizing, quickly putting something together. Is that software that you need to purchase, or? These aren't books, right? This is just software to be able to digitize everything?
Well, if you come to the?
Can you speak into the mic, sir, please?
Yeah, if you come to the second floor of our library, you will see a lot of our newspapers, magazines related to Guam. And these are all hard copies. So, we want to digitize those so that it will be easy for people to access. They can, they should be able to access any of, any of our data while they're at home, if they're, as long as they have internet. So, this is, this is, this particular grant came from the Lieutenant Governor's Office. And as far as securing the resources for this, to take this project off the ground, we have done already, we have found the scanners, and we have found the software. So, we, just a matter of it's getting the purchasing done.
Okay, so it's already in progress. And how much did you receive from Lieutenant Governor for this project?
Four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, yes.
And you're already in process with that?
Not quite processed, we have secured the resources, but not purchased yet.
Oh, so you still have to go through the procurement process?
Yes, yeah, probably that.
And this is delaying you?
Yeah, delay, real delay.
And that's why, for the bill? Okay, that's clear.
And, you know, this is very, very important for us. You know, these, the material that we have are kind of very old. You know, if we keep it for a long time, it may not last that long.
This funding, the four hundred thousand dollars from the Lieutenant Governor, is this ARP funding? Is this ARP funding, or is it under another grant?
This is, this is another grant.
It's the Department of Interior.
Oh, the Interior grant?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity.
Senator Frank, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. A little confused here. I guess the whole intent of the bill was to streamline your procurement process? Is this what this bill?
Yes, this bill is to speed up our procurement process by having our own system in our library with our board. And then, once we decided the, what, the kind of material we wanted, and we get the price quotation, and the board, board will be the ultimate decision-maker in this. So, we submit to the board, and the board will say, okay, this is where, this is what we want. And so, and then we submit to the, submit to GSA, and they will do all the purchasing and things like that. But they are not going to spend time selecting this or that, because most of them are, like, for an example, eBooks. We've been having almost, in eight or nine months, it was, it has been rejected because of the, the vendor comes with a different spec, and GSA, and all of that. So, finally, it's still in, hopefully, we're going to get it done. So, this, our processing, our purchasing is, is not up to date with our technology, especially with the library material.
So, what you're saying is then, you've got a purchase order, or you want to be able to purchase eBooks and audiobooks. It's the GSA buyer that makes the determination as to what eBooks and?
Ultimately, we make, but right now, since there is no law, but they are, they will be the one to make the final purchase.
But who makes the determination as to what eBook or audiobook is going to be purchased?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, they negotiate, they negotiate with the vendor, and, and they get a price quotation. And whoever, it's right now out there for bidding. So, whoever is going to give us a better price and a better service, and they will be the one to decide. We, we won't get involved in their decision-making.
Okay, so, what does your purchase order look like when you send it down to GSA?
Well, the GSA is the standard purchase order. They will issue based on their conditions. And see, GSA is used to getting things by touching it, seeing it, and, and receiving it, materials. But in this case, they only can see, for an example, eBooks, you don't, you don't go, literally go and take it. It's, when we decided, say, hundred and forty, eighty, eight thousand dollars worth of books, that's going to be posted in our website. Say, we make a payment today, the following day, when they receive the payment, all the books that we wanted, it's going to be in our website. So, the patrons will be, will be notified, and they, when they have this device, has an app. When the app, then they can choose the kind of books they want to read, and say, they give two weeks or three weeks. Once the time is done, and that automatically goes away from them.
Okay, let me protect for this, for example, you've got the Guam Police Department who wants a 2023 Dodge Charger with six cylinders, you know, obviously four doors, you know, and, and all this. And that's what they get. I'm just trying to figure out how this would help you to ensure, that's why I'm asking, who makes the determination as to what eBooks to get? Is it the, is GSA right now?
Well, when we get the bid, when we get the bid, they open the bid, they have the list of the books titled. Different companies will come and say, okay, ten dollars a book, or fifteen dollars a book, and they will give it to the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of books. So, one vendor is giving, say, five hundred titles, another vendor is going to give eight hundred titles, and the service, how often they can, what kind of title. And nowadays, there are six lending models. For an example, we can get a book and post it in our website, and, and we pay only the way, how, how many people read. Say, for an example, ten people borrow that book and read, and we will end up paying a dollar a book, dollar a patron, things like that. That's a different thing.
I understand.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just wondering whether this language is strong enough so that it does, it's specific enough for that?
Yes, they will give the?
Because as I read this language?
Oh, I see.
On the bill?
Hmm, I see, I see.
It still gives the authority for GSA to be able to decide what books they're going to get.
No, in this case, we select the items, the board selects the item, the board approves it, and the list of the title, and give it to GSA, GSA will order the title.
If that be the case, I don't, I really don't see why there is a need for the bill. Again, I'm not trying to circumstop it.
No, I, I'm glad you're asking, I'm glad you're asking.
I understand what you're saying, and then the bill reflects that. Because as I read the bill now, okay? Based on what I read and what I hear as your intent, there's a gap that's missing here that I'll probably, you know, we have to work with the committee on being able to address that so that it is specific to what you, the purpose of what you want. If you want a certain eBook or a class of eBooks, you know, on, you know, National Geographic, let's just take that for example, okay? In a certain format, whether it be, you know, a PDF format, or, okay, whatever. Okay, that, that is what you're going to be able to get. Okay, right now, as it stands, as this bill stands, it's still, to the interpretation of GSA, and it may not fit that purpose. So, I just want to make sure that.
I see.
Okay? That's why I asked, I asked these questions. I appreciate, and I appreciate that, that you're going to go to. I love eBooks, my iPad is full of eBooks, and I'd like to be able to, to get a subscription or to be able to borrow from you guys.
Yes.
Instead of me having to buy from Amazon, okay? All right? So, appreciate that. So, I just wanted to make sure, because what I'm reading in the bill and what I'm hearing, two different things, okay? So, I just want to make sure that's, we tighten that up for you, okay? Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Senator Blas, I'm so glad that you're going to help us make sure this bill gets through, whether amended or otherwise, but thank you for, for being here. And this now concludes our hearing on Bill Number 354-36, and I call it duly heard. I want to thank all of you who came to testify today. Thank you, especially to this panel, for sticking it out while three bills ahead of you were being heard. I appreciate your, your patience, and I recognize your commitment to the library systems and to ensuring that the materials are well-received in the manner and, and in the form that, that is important to the library systems. And I think that message was impressed. We also learned so much about the library system today, and I appreciate all of you coming, and from the perspective of librarians, board members, patrons, to, to have, you know, us understand the, what seems like a simple fix to a problem that really needs to be addressed and corrected in Guam law. Bill Number, again, thank you to everyone who came to testify on all four bills, Bill Number 308-36. Bill Number 308-36COR, Bill Number 331-36LS, Bill Number 347-36LS, and Bill Number 354-36LS. All have been duly heard, and I now call this public hearing adjourned. The time now is 12:05. Any individuals who wish to submit testimony will have 10 days from today to do so. Testimony can be submitted via email to senatorsmunyabarnes@guamlegislature.org, or you can call or hand, mail or hand-deliver to our Congress Building address, 163 West Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatnia, Guam, 96910. Sidus Maasi again, everybody, and thank you, and have a very safe and meaningful leading up to Thanksgiving holiday celebration. Sidus Maasi.